Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. So bear with us if you're logging into the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order here in just a couple of minutes. Francis, or Paula, or someone, can you tell me, are we missing anybody on Prime Gov at this point, other than Rusty La Forge, who will not be with us today?
I don't see Kamal, or Janice.
Okay, I do not see, I do not see them listed either on the, in the panelists for Zoom either, so they may not be logged in yet. I did not hear from either of those folks that they would not be in attendance, so I'm assuming they will be joining us.
I see Kamal connected in Prime Gov.
He may, he may be logging in right now then.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Felix Scott.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was just wanting to let you know I was in.
Okay, when we call upon your case, then you'll be able to
Okay.
Star six.
Are we just missing Janice at this point, and Rusty La Forge?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have quorum then, so let's get started. I'm gonna call and order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I want to thank everybody, particularly those members of the public who are joining us today. We're happy to have you, even if it is by video conference. This is the November 12th, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting. And I have a few announcements just to make about the video conference nature of this meeting. This one in particular is a little tricky. But if the video conference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which because of the expiring state statute, which was amended on open meetings, will be December 10th, and it will be in person at City Hall. There would be additional details, or there will be additional details available on the website regarding attendance limitations and things like that due to limits in terms of who could be in City Hall. Those details are, I think, are still being finalized, but at any rate, it will be in person next, and that meeting would be December 10th, 2020. The agenda and supporting documents for today's meeting can be found at OKC.gov. Should you need assistance finding materials today, or assistance with the meeting, you can call city staff at 405-297-2289. And Sidney Lakin can assist you with getting access to those materials. Again, that's 297-2289. For anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, or under Citizens to be Heard, if you've not previously notified staff by phone or email, signing up online, I will call at various times during today's meeting with each case item, to give you all a chance to briefly comment on any agenda item you wish to be heard on, or Citizens to be Heard, which is at the end of today's agenda. Speakers will be allowed five minutes to comment. I do reserve the right as chair to prevent redundant comments, limit comments that do not pertain to items before the commission and discussion, limit items pertaining to private matters between parties, things like that. So we appreciate your adherence to our bylaws. Please do keep your lines on mute unless you're asked to speak, or you're called upon as time to speak. And if you're not Zoom proficient, that's okay. I don't think we are either even still. But if you wish to do so, if you wish to be recognized, you do that by pressing star nine on your phone. If you're joining us by phone, star nine is what would raise your hand to essentially tell us you wish to be heard. And then star six will unmute your phone. It will also mute it as well. Alt-Y on your computer is how you raise and lower your hand. So if you want to be recognized, you can do so by using Alt-Y. And the spacebar is how you unmute it. So as a reminder to commission members, everyone has signed up and agreed to be visible by video conference, not audio, to my knowledge, which means that you need to stay with your camera on and in front of your computer at all times. Should you need to step away for a moment, just interrupt the meeting and announce that you're stepping away, so everyone's aware. And if there is somebody who's missing for 15 minutes or so, we would do a roll call. And we do have, I think, one person who will be voice voting today. Commissioner Hinkle, are you voting by voice today?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, again, thank you all for joining us.
Commissioner Cravens, I have not managed to get into OKC.gov either, so I will probably also be voice voting today.
Oh, okay, no problem. I'll make sure and call on you as well. Appreciate you letting me know. With that, let's get started. Our first order of business is the receipt of the minutes from the October 22nd, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion on receipt of the minutes?
So moved, Commissioner Heisman.
I have a motion for Commissioner Heisman. Do I have a second?
Second. Second from
I have a second from Commissioner Privet. So I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes. When it's appropriate, we can vote. Waiting for, there it is. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Oh, I, well, it says, Commissioner Powers?
Yes, yes.
And Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
Okay, now all votes have been cast. Thank you very much, staff, and the minutes are received. For those of you that are public that can't see what we're doing, we're using a voting system called Prime Gov, so bear with us as each item's called. We'll have to allow the system time to vote. Unbelievably, we can be faster than the system, so bear with us. Next item on today's agenda are continuance requests. We had a lot of shifting sand here before the meeting started, so commission members, please pay particular attention under new requests. Mr. Butler, I believe we have a number of requests previously submitted that are uncontested. Would you mind reading those into the record?
Yes, item 34, PC 10702, has been asked to be deferred to December 10th. Item 35, SPUD 1260, has been withdrawn. Item 36, SPUD 1265, deferred to December 10th. Item 37, PUD 1784, deferred to December 10th. Item 38, C 7227, deferred to December 10th. Item 39, C 7229, deferred to December 10th. Item 40, SPUD 1217, deferred to January 28th. And finally, item 41, PC 10688, has been withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wanted to be heard on any of those matters today? I'll pause a moment. Seeing no participants have raised their hand, I'll take a motion on the uncontested continuances.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the continuances as well.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Coffey. So I have a motion and a second to approve the continuance request as read. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Um, I think I'm up and running. I was able to vote on Prime Gov, so.
Oh, good. All right, excellent. So all votes have been cast? And those continuances are approved unanimously. Next is new requests, and we have a number of them. And one that I got late, that I'm not even sure, Mr. Butler, you're aware of, but I'll, we'll go there when we get to it. So go ahead and start.
Okay, I have four that I'm aware of. Item nine, which is the 7224, December 10th, continue to December 10th. Item 18, case PUD 1786, continue to January 14th. Item 19, C 7230, deferred to January 14th. And finally, item 26, which is SPUD 1264, deferred to December 10th.
Okay, um, and I just want to put on the record for the point of case 18 and 19, just for the other commissioners' benefit. I reached out to the applicant and requested discontinuance. This is a fairly complex commercial zoning that's now going residential, and I just requested that we visit on revisiting the entirety of the site for the purposes of creating some mitigation measures for the remaining commercial. So the applicant was agreeable to that, but I just want to make sure that the public and other commissioners are aware of that conversation. So with that, anybody that wanted to be heard on any of those items today? And my mistake, Jeff, the one that I thought was a continuous, we need, it's on the consent agenda, we need to get there first, so. Say nothing, I'll take a motion on the continuances as read, the new continuances.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the new continuances be granted as read.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Somebody, anybody?
Commissioner Coffey, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve or grant the continuances as read by staff. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes.
All votes have been cast? And those continuances have been approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. We have nine remaining items on the consent docket. Do you want to read those for us, Mr. Butler?
Yes, item one, case number CE 1041, application to close 150.18 feet of the East-West Alley, east in block four of Westover Edition, which is south of Southwest Sixth Street and east of South Ollie Avenue. Item two, PC 10696, application to rezone 11600 North Westminster Road from R1 with SP 496 special permit to the AA Agricultural District. Item three, case number PC 10699, application to rezone 2350 North Sarah Road from A8R1. Item four, PC 10700, application to rezone 10510 Northwest 23rd Street from A8R2. Item five, PC 10701, application to rezone 15123 North Council Road from PUD 1568 to R1. Item six, C 7218, final plat of Montage Section 2, and that's located north of Southwest 44th Street and west of North Mustang Road. Item seven, case number C 7221, final plat of Renaissance Park. And that is located north of Northeast 23rd Street and east of North Coltrane Road. Item eight, C 7222, final plat of Wild Horse Ranch, located north of Southwest 59th Street and east of Mustang Road. Item nine has been continued. And item 10, case number C 7231, final plat of Lone Oak North, located south of northwest 164th Street and east of North Portland Avenue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Is there anyone that wanted to be heard on any of those items today? And that's who I was waiting for. Mr. Lesby, are you with us? Does anyone recognize him?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, is it Lesby?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lesby. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joe Lesby, and I live at 2800 North Bartel Road in Oklahoma City.
City staff forwarded me your request for a continuance. Do you want to make that request formally today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's go ahead and just pull this item off consent, and we'll move it to the first item on today's agenda. So we're removing item number seven from the consent docket. We have, that leaves us with eight, excuse me, seven remaining items on the consent agenda for today. Is there anybody that want to be heard? Anybody else want to be heard on any of those items? Guess that's actually eight items. Okay, very none. I'll take a motion on the balance of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the consent docket be approved as amended.
I have a motion and a second? Do I have a second?
Claire, a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the continuances excluding item number seven. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All right, all votes have been cast? And those consent items are approved unanimously. This begins items requiring separate vote, and our first item on today's agenda would be item number seven. Mr. Reed, or someone else from Crafton and Toll, are you with us today?
Yes, sir.
The, Mr. Lesby had reached out via an email. Admittedly, it came late, which is why I didn't even make notice to you, I don't believe. They've requested a continuance to review and discuss this. Do you have any objection to that? It'd be the December 10th meeting.
That's fine, I guess we can take it to continuance.
Okay, if it poses some problem, we can try to discuss it here, but I, I mean.
No, we have some time, we can wait.
What, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I know, what is the nature of the request? What's the issue?
Yeah, Mr. Lesby, can you hear me?
Yes.
And maybe, I was hoping we may be able to resolve it here. I'm glad you're stopping us here. Do you, do you have comments or things that you want to share about this application that concern you, sir? Somebody's got to recognize Mr. Lesby again. Staff?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, my only, my concern about this was, one, I really didn't find out about this request until the last minute. For whatever reason, we didn't get a notification. So I had questions concerning the density. It looks like, to me, like it's an awful lot of houses in such a small space. Also had traffic concerns and fire and water concerns here at my location, which is not too far from this proposed addition. We have our own well and septic. I wasn't aware that there was city water or sewage within the general area, so I was wanting time to research that. Also found out that a lot of my neighbors don't know about this proposed addition either. And so those were my main concerns. If somebody can address those immediately, great.
Mr. Lesby, what I would say, just so you know, this is a, this is a final plat. I took your late notice request seriously, which, you know, gave the email, which is why I, you know, I offered up to try to punt it. The preliminary plat, which noticed would have been sent on prior, was approved by the planning commission on July 9th of 2020. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. I don't recall that there were active protests at that time, do you?
There were not, and part of the reason, and I, and I hear you, Mr. Lesby. I have family that lives in the, just north of here on 30th and Bartel, so I'm, and I, my grandma used to live on 33rd, close to Bartel, so I'm with you in knowing the neighborhood and how important it is. I, one, it was already zoned R2, as I recall. Brad, is that right?
Yes, it was.
So there wasn't, as far as the questions about density, we couldn't address those because it was already zoned that way. So the only issue is about, is about how the houses are going to be situated on this property, Mr. Lesby, at this point. And not whether or not we can deal with the issue of whether it's a good idea. Because again, the existing zoning already allowed this, even before the planning commission had taken any action.
I'm sorry, it's, it's my understanding of R2 is a medium-density zoning, and just a simple math exercise. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not a, an expert, but shows that the houses per square foot in this plat is a lot higher than that. Now, and that's just a simple math, not, not counting the streets or easements or anything else.
Well, what I would, what I would tell you is that this plat has to be in conformance with the underlying zoning, Mr. Lesby, which is PUD 1773. That, too, was noticed and brought through the legislative process of planning commission and city council and was approved. So the lot size would have to conform. And I'll tell you a couple of things that were told in our staff report that may assuage your concerns. Number one, the project is served by city sewer. It's also served by water. They would be required to connect to both. Our staff report also indicates that the design of the final plat does conform with Oklahoma City subdivision regulations, and that the design is in conformance with PUD 1773. So the lot sizes are appropriate and in line with what was approved at a zoning, and I don't know exactly when 1773 was approved. It's not, can't be that old, based on the number. So it, it, there really isn't much to, for us here to discuss, which is why it was on the consent agenda. It's pretty, it's pretty administrative at this point.
But okay, Mr. Chairman, again, just for clarification for Mr. Lesby. My understanding, and again, Brad stopped me, even when we approved that PUD, the underlying zoning was already R2 before.
Yes, it was. The whole thing was R2. There was industrial at the front, and the PUD allowed for a smaller R1, but the overall density is less than if that would have developed as an R2.
Just wanted to be clear about that, that we did not approve that initial designation.
Mr. Lesby, does that answer your question?
Yeah, the only, the only other question I had was, like, one of the people we reached out to was the principal of the Pleasant Hill Schools, and they were concerned about the number of students that would add to their already crowded capacity. Do we have anything on that?
Which school district is this?
I would assume Middel School District, and so the nearest elementary school would be Pleasant Hill.
It would be, and it is Middel.
Yeah, I would just note from the staff report that the school district was notified of the application and did not provide a response. Ma'am, I'm so sorry, I cannot hear you. You've got to be right up next to that microphone.
She said she spoke to the principal of the schools right before this meeting, and this is the first time they've heard about this proposal?
Well, so. I, unfortunately, I still can hear you. Mr. Lesby, I, look, I appreciate your concerns. If you'll give us just a moment. Commissioner Pennington, look, this is your ward, and I apologize if this was sent, staff sent this notice to me, kind of at the, at the very last second, I think, to make sure I got it before we went live. I'll leave this in your hands as being your ward. If you, I'm, I don't know that we really need to continue this because we have all the facts and circumstances. I'll leave it in your hands to decide what you want to do, but I'll, I think I'll take a motion at this point.
I mean, my, my thought is, my thought is this, I just want to be very clear to Mr. Lesby that even if we granted the continuance, there is not a way for us to address the concerns that you brought up. There is not a, there's not an avenue for us to pursue to address that. This plat is not even about the issues that, that you're, that you're mentioning about, because they were all dealt with at the zoning. And again, the underlying zoning, even separate from anybody in, on this planning commission, even before we took any action, was already R2. It was already higher density. It surprised me, too, Mr. Lesby, because again, I'm very familiar with the area, and I had no idea. So I was surprised about that, but it's, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances. I'm sure that Brad, because they do good work, would be more than willing to explain to you all what their plans are, if you wanted that. But unfortunately, there's nothing, there's no action that we can take today that's going to address, or in the future with this continuance, to, to address your, your concerns, and I do apologize.
If we're, if we're a little too late in the process for this, then I apologize for taking up your time. If I guess it's Mr. Reed, if that's his proposed addition, and he wants to get with me outside this meeting and just go over the plans, that's great, but it doesn't sound like, from what you're saying, there's anything that my objection is going to overcome today.
Yes, and please don't take that, Mr. Lesby, as a lack of care or concern on our side about your objection. Once, once a development reaches this phase, it really is essentially administrative to review any deviations or non-compliance with subdivision regulations that were done or made between when it was approved preliminarily, and when it is approved as a final plat, and that's where we are today. So we do appreciate you calling in.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Pennington, your ward, your call.
Mr. Chairman, I move, rule, item seven.
May I interrupt? We have a hand raised on this case. It's an attendee.
Okay, I don't see them. I see a phone number, so it would be star six on your phone, whoever's calling in.
Yes, this is Dr. Robertson, the principal at Pleasant Hill Elementary, and I was just informed about the meeting today, and I was wondering who would have been notified in our district about this. My concern is our school. We are at capacity, it's a small school, to around 250 students, in which we have no vacancy or no additional rooms at this time. So I was wondering who might, they said the district was informed, but nobody responded. Do you, can someone tell me who was informed and when?
I, I tell you what, let's do, let's do it this way. Let me give you a phone number, ma'am, and I'm going to let you call that number and get this information from city staff, so we can continue on with the meeting. That phone number is 297-2623. That is a general staff number. They can give you that information and support. I will tell you, ironically, we had a meeting this morning at 10 o'clock, started at 10, and actually, the school portion started 11. We had representatives from every school district on that call, with the exception of a few. There was not a Middel representative on that call. There probably was 20 or so districts represented, 20 representatives of districts on that call. So I would encourage your district to get involved in that process as well.
Well, and, and again, we have tried, could not find out information once. And we were informed that it was happening on 23rd and Coltrane, not 23rd and Bartel, so we could not, and over a year and a half in trying to find out, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cravens.
Can get you direction to where you need to go, in terms of how it was noticed and who received notice. Those notices go to your district, they don't go to your school. I'm not exactly sure, entirely sure who would have received it, so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I note that our staff report indicates that outside agencies informed included the Edmund School District. So maybe that's why.
That was a mistake on my part. The, the notice did go to Middel Schools. I just forgot to update it in the staff report, so that's my fault.
Thank you, Jared, appreciate that. Okay, I had a motion on the floor. I'd like to take a second at this point. Somebody, anybody?
Hinkle, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hinkle to approve the final plat for C 7221 of Renaissance Park. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast?
Not mine. Hold on, I'm working on it. My browser crashed.
And staff, I'm, I'm getting a, it's showing me that everybody's vote is cast on my screen. I'm not sure if that's an error that can be addressed or fixed, but just so you know. And that application is approved unanimously. The next item on today's agenda is item number 11.
Item 11 is case number PUD SP 1558A, and that's a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1558, located at 3303 Northeast 23rd Street.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to step away just for a moment.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. I would just note for the record, the purposes of this item, that staff indicates the specific plan meets the technical requirements of 1558. So unless there's some discussion on it that's different from that, I'll take a motion. And this is in Commissioner Pennington's ward.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Somebody, anybody?
Claire, second.
I have a motion and a second for Commissioner Claire to approve the specific plan to PUD SP 1558. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
I think all votes have been cast. Except for Commissioner Powers, who, yep, so that application is approved. Item number 12?
Oh, this case number PUD SP 1515K, application to, for a specific plan pursuant to Oh, this case number PUD SP-1515K, application to, for a specific plan pursuant to approval of PUD 1515 located at 13310 Pawnee Drive.
This is a Ward eight case. I would just note the staff report indicates the specific plan meets the technical requirements, PUD 1515. I have absolutely zero objection to it, and I would be grateful if someone could take a motion or make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item, item 12.
I have a motion. I have a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the specific plan for PUD SP-1515K. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And that application is approved. Staff, it appears that the votes were notated as Janice Powers voting yes and Nate Clare not voting. Probably needs to be addressed.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, okay, so Nate Clare didn't.
Yeah, I didn't, it didn't give me an opportunity to vote. It went, it disappeared off.
For the purposes of the record, how would you vote, sir?
I would have voted yea.
Okay. Next item is item 13.
Item 13, case V21, application on behalf of the owner of the Edge at Midtown Platte Development requesting variances to sections 3.6.2. D.2C and 3.6.2. D.2D of the subdivision regulations.
This is Jared Martin with Development Services. Do a real quick rundown on this one. Essentially, the subdivision regulations require that a plat be filed with the appropriate county, no, no more than 120 calendar days after being signed by the planning director, which occurs right after it's accepted by city council. It also indicates that if it's not filed in that amount of time, that the plat becomes void. This is a variance request to extend essentially that 120 calendar days because the, the plat was accepted in January of 2017. Due to a, an error, it wasn't filed and hasn't been returned to the city, so they're requesting a variance to that 120 calendar day requirement and also requesting a variance to the nullification of the plat.
So it's fair to describe these changes as more administrative in nature than technical? Is that, would you agree with that?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Heisman, this is your ward. Do you have any concerns on this one?
I have no concerns at all, and I'd be ready to make a motion.
Okay, I'll just ask very quickly if there's anybody else that wanted to be heard on this item today. This is item V21. That's a case notation I don't read very often. This is a variance request, so we're going to need six votes, and we'll have to take them separately. Commissioner Heisman, if you want to start with just the first one, we'll go ahead and start the motion. Commissioner Heisman, are you ready to make that?
Sorry.
A motion on the variance?
Yep. So I make a motion to recommend approval on the variance for item V-21. The variance of the, I apologize, subdivision regulation, is it Article 3, Section 3.6.2. D.2?
Subpart C would be the first one. We need to make them distinctly. Okay. I have a motion, I have a motion to approve the first variance to section 3.6.2, D.2, SubC of the subdivision regulations. Do I have a second? I appear to have a second.
Coffee, I second the motion.
Perfection. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Believe all votes have been cast. And that variance is approved unanimously. Commissioner Heisman, we have one more variance here.
Yep. I'd like to also make a, a motion to approve the variance to section 3.6.2. D.2, subsection D, subdivision regulations related to this item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I've seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and that variance is approved unanimously as well. Next item on the agenda is item 14.
14 is case C-7225, preliminary plat of Santa Fe Point located north of Northwest 50th Street and west of North Santa Fe Avenue.
Mr. Martin? You're muted, Jared.
My turn to be muted, sorry. The developers proposing one single-family lot and 13 two-family lots and one common area on 4.89 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 2.89 dwelling units per acre. Public street, water and sewer improvements are proposed. The site is currently zoned R2, medium-low-density residential. Access to the, there is one single-family lot. Access to that will be taken directly off of Southwest 50th Street. The remainder of the lots will be getting access off of a newly constructed street that will come off of South Santa Fe Avenue. There are four TEs. I believe the applicant is in agreement with those TEs. Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll is on the line in case you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dillon, anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
Nothing to add, just might reiterate that it conforms to comp plan as well as the zoning, and we do agree with the four TEs, so I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions you might have.
That's great. I also just note for the record, it also conforms with the subdivision regulations. This is in Ward four. Commissioner Privet, any concerns on this one?
None whatsoever. I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there anyone here that wanted to be heard on this item today? I'll pause just a moment to raise your hand. Star nine or alt Y, star nine on your phone, alt Y on your computer. Seeing none, Commissioner Privet, I'll take a motion unless there's further discussion.
Take a motion to approve, case number C-7225.
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Hinkle, second.
I have a motion and a second for Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes.
All votes have been cast, and the preliminary plat for, for Santa Fe Point has been approved unanimously. Next item is item 15.
15 is C-7228, preliminary plat of Overholster Run located south of Northwest 23rd Street and east of Sarah Road. Also a variance to section 5.3.1. D.5 of the subdivision regulations.
So this is a subdivision that will have 255 single-family residential lots, 37 two-family lots, and three common areas on 79.81 acres. The gross residential density of 4.12 dwelling units per acre. Access to the development will be taken from one median divided street connection with Northwest 23rd Street and one median divided connection with North Sarah Road. They are requesting a variance to the subdivision regulations for a connection to the east. There are six TEs. As I said, they will be requesting a variance for TE number two. Believe they are in agreement with the remainder of the TEs, and Kendall Dillon and Craft and Toll is on the line to represent this application.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Dillon, anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
No, no additional comments on the TEs we're in agreement with. I might mention that our request on TE number two for the variance, which pertains to a street stub to the east. If you'll notice on, in your staff report, there's a really large common area along the east. There is a whole lot of water that drains from the south that comes upon, on us on the south side. It's very flat on that east end, so we are planning to build a very large pond just to make this project work. So obviously, us trying to stub to the east is fairly problematic. That's the reason that we're requesting the variance. I might mention that the subdivision to the south of us does have a stub to the north that we'll be connecting with, and that preliminary plat was approved with the stub to the east as well. So if you look at it from quarter section to quarter section, there'll still be connectivity. It's just, like I say, we've got a little bit of a problem with drainage and topography to make a stub work on the north half of this quarter section. So that's the reason and the purpose for the variance, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I'll just note outside of the variance that the preliminary plat conforms with subdivision regulations, also meeting the access requirements, and it is in conformance with the underlying zoning districts of R1 and R2. Commissioner Clare, this is your ward. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this one?
No. Mr. Dillon had, had reached out to me yesterday. I unfortunately did not have an opportunity to get back to him, but reviewing the exhibits and, and as he described, you know, with that whole east area being detention, it is really hard to make that connection, and I feel more comfortable with that connection, you know, you've got a connection to the south and then a connection over to the east. So there is some connectivity. So I think, I think that's the best that can be done at this stage. So it's a difficult site, so.
Got it. Fair enough. Is there anybody that wanted to be heard on this item today? Members of the public that are with us? Alt Y on your computer, star nine on your phone. I'll pause just a moment. Seeing no one, if there's no further discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Clare, I'll take a motion if you're ready to make it.
Happy to make a motion on C-7228, the variance to section 5.3.1. D.5 of the subdivision regulations.
I have a motion to approve the variance. Do I have a second?
Coffee, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and that variance has been approved unanimously. Just need a motion on the item, Commissioner Clare.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve C-7228, subject to the technical evaluations.
Coffee, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat to C-7228. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and that application is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 16.
16 is case C-7232, final plat, a replat of a part of G. N. Weisner Block 13, and that is located north of Northwest 12th Street and east of North Blackwelder Avenue.
So this is a replat, is a relatively small area there. They're going to create 10 single-family residential lots in conformance with SPOD 1228. A portion of the lots will be taking direct access off of North Blackwelder Avenue. The remainder of the lots will be taking access off of an alley that will be improved to the, on the east end of the side off of Northwest 12th Street. Looks like there were four TEs with this one. I believe the applicant is in agreement with those TEs. Alec Bass with Walsh Engineering is on the line to represent the application.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Bass, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
I would just say this is a spud that was recently before this commission, so you should have memory of this project. This is just the follow-up for the final plat to go with that development, and we are in agreement with the TEs. We've worked with staff to develop some solutions to come into compliance with those.
Okay, thank you very much. I would just note that the design of the final plat replat meets the access requirements of the subdivision regulations, and that there is seemingly kind of a little bit of a lot issue in terms of the requirements of SPOD 1228. Commissioner Heisman, this is your ward, so I will let you take it from here.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't have many comments. The one thing I'll point out is that, yes, it did come by recently. To me, this is conceptually a change from what they originally proposed. I, I personally preferred the original proposal, but at the same time, I don't see any reason, at least personally, that this isn't also an appropriate use or an appropriate way to approach this piece of dirt. If, if, you know, any of my fellow commissioners have other thoughts, I'd be happy to discuss, but otherwise, I think at this point, seeing that they've met in, or that they intend to meet all of the technical evaluations, I'd be ready to make a, a motion.
Okay. And they did agree to that, so I'll ask quickly if there's anybody here with us today that wishes to be heard on this matter. C-7232, alt Y on your computer, star nine on your phone. I do not see anybody looking to participate, so I'll take that as a sign. Unless there's further discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Heisman, I'll take a motion.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to recommend approval, C-7232, or, sorry, make a motion to approve, C-72302. Yeah, that's it.
Coffee, second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of C-7232. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and the application is approved unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Bass. Item 17.
17 is PUD 1781, an application to rezone 1315 East Wilshire Boulevard from R1 to PUD 1781.
Yeah, this is a 74-acre site. It's just located on the north side of Wilshire Boulevard, east of Kelly. It's going from R1 to a PUD with an R4 base. It's a fairly unique PUD. It will be to develop a campus for special needs adults. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda, recommend approval with four TEs. I believe Brian Kuhn represents the applicant and would like to discuss TEs one and two.
Mr. Kuhn, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I just wanted to introduce our team around here. I've got our executive director from Wings, part of the staff, part of the board, as well as our architectural team from Box and Paint. So if there's any questions, we can probably cover that. On TE number one, as a few of you all have been out in this area fairly, it's about two miles east of Broadway Extension, really no development out there, larger tracks. There's several TV stations, several antennas in this area, and instead, and so I'd just like to throw out, I, we do want sidewalks, definitely inside our project, but we just feel like it's a little bit premature to have a sidewalk on Wilshire right now. So I'd like to offer a couple of different options to that TE. And one is that we're going to be building this in a lot of different phases, adding buildings as needed. So I would just maybe suggest that we can, one is when the sidewalk is adjacent to our property, that we will construct or offer a fee in lieu with our next building permit after that sidewalk is completed, or when Wilshire is widened, if and when that happens. And at that point, we will either put in our fee in lieu or, or construct the sidewalk, or we will do, I thought about, we could do our fee. We're a nonprofit, and we're trying to raise money to make this happen, and feel very confident that that will happen. But I'm just thinking that possibly at the beginning of the project, since the sidewalk won't go anywhere now, is that maybe we could offer our fee in lieu at the 10th building permit or something like that. So just throwing out a couple of options to maybe put the sidewalk off for a little bit, but again, we are all in favor of sidewalks, although our residents really won't be leaving the property on foot. They will spend a lot of time walking around the campus, but not along Wilshire. So just throwing that out there. TE number two, we've got a buffer for any event centers, should that ever happen, of 400 feet along the east boundary. What I'd like, staff had requested a boundary, some kind of a setback from the west boundary. What I'm actually asking for, maybe recommend, that we will not have an event center within 400 feet of any existing residential structure. So that way, I understand the need for it. There is a house to our southwest corner, not, there's one on our property, and then there's one immediately west of that that is, is existing home, and if that home should ever go away, then we would be able to build an event center closer than 400 feet. You know, we weigh acquire future properties. So anyways, 400 feet from any existing residence structure is what I'm offering. And at that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kuhn. I'll just note a comment from staff as it relates to TE one that was relayed to me was that the reason that this sidewalk is of greater significance is that is that Kelly, which is just west of your property here, is a transportation route where future stops are contemplated. And that's obviously a priority for the city. Sidewalks are, you know, requested and built almost universally. So I'll defer to Commissioner Pennington to lead our discussion on it, but that was just one piece of information I wanted to pass along to the commission. And certainly I have thoughts on the event aspect of it, but we'll, we'll get there, I'm sure. Commissioner Pennington, this is in fact your ward, so I'll let you lead off our discussion with your concerns, sir, if you're ready to do that.
Sure. And first of all, I think that, I think conceptually it's a great idea and for a wonderful cause. And so, you know, I look forward to the discussion further about how we can make sure that everything can work to everybody's satisfaction. I'm wondering if Jeff, if you could address Brian's suggestions on TE 1? If there's one that you all like or what you think of those before we, to inform our discussion.
Yeah, the sidewalk TE?
Yes.
So there was the, there was the option to kind of defer it for the fee in lieu or kind of when sidewalk occurs there. Is that it, Brian? Did I miss one?
Yes. Yeah, when there's one adjacent, we will either put in a fee in lieu or construct the sidewalk.
Okay. What about, my thought was what about doing something? Just having it like part of the last phase of the development or something, as we don't, you know, we don't know when exactly there might be sidewalk appear there. You guys might be, you know, long done by then.
Yeah, that'd be fine. And like I said, we can trigger it with our 10th or 20th building permit. There's going to be lots of cottages, residential buildings. So, you know, yeah, we'd like to push it off. We definitely want it. I definitely see a purpose. If there's a sidewalk from Kelly coming east, that we'd want to extend that. You know, again, our residents won't be taking public transportation. But we, you know, whatever works for us supporting the city and their sidewalk goals, we just didn't want to have to do it at the start.
I mean, that makes sense to me, commissioners, that we, you know, there's no sidewalk adjacent to it right now. But I would just, it would make sense to have them do it before they're, you know, completely done with the project, even if there is no sidewalk.
So where are we on language then? What's your suggestion, Jeff?
I would say that they would, that they would be required to put it in prior to the last building permit issued, maybe some language like that would work. Or at the time that sidewalk is built adjacent to them. This is Commissioner Claire. I have a little bit of concern with just stating that it's, you know, prior to their last building permit because, you know, that could be, who knows how long that could be? And there could, there could always be a future phase, you know, and that never is realized. So I'm much more in agreement with the, or in favor of the, you know, at such time that either 78th is expanded or, you know, sidewalks are brought to, and I would say one, you know, one side of the property. I don't think, I don't think it has to be on both sides of the property before they have to put theirs in, so.
This, Commissioner Powers, I agree with that. The idea of tying it to the last something is, is not really very workable, in my view. I think it needs to be triggered by something that we can see occur and now is occurring, whether that's the widening of the street or bringing sidewalks to one side or the other, or, you know. I think I would even prefer that to the idea of tying it to the 10th building permit. I, I think it's, I think, you know, it needs to be something that's related to the infrastructure itself. And so the widening of the street or the bringing of the sidewalks to either side of the, of the property, I think would be good.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
Yeah, we're good with that.
78th expansion and the adjacent sidewalks, basically.
What? Yes.
Is that something that could be enforced? I wonder if, if the development is completely done. I guess then it would just be on the property owner, even though the development's done. Because it, you know, it could be a very long time before anything's done on that street. I don't know when infrastructure would, will there. So if, if they're completely developed out and there's still no sidewalk there, is that okay?
Well, I think, you know, I guess there is a point at which they probably ought to post a fee in lieu. You're right about that. I mean, if they get the thing completely developed and, you know, it's another 20 years. I mean, I don't know. Do we care if it's another 20 years before sidewalks come to the area? You know, will we just have to absorb that? I don't know.
Or just build it?
Well, I think, I think that's a good point. I mean, why don't we just do all three? I mean, I know we don't, I know we don't like the, we don't like necessarily the last building permit. Maybe we could go with, you know, I guess we could still go add that to the list, the existing list, and maybe we'll still catch it. I mean, that's our last, our last thing that we could do.
When the first of whatever these three things are occurs, either the city is widened or the sidewalks come or they pull their last building permit? I'd be okay with that.
Fine with me. I mean, I don't have any objection.
Sounds good to me.
All right. What other concerns you have, Commissioner Bacon?
And sorry for that taking so long. And I wanted to, one, get, Jeff, are you all amenable to the recommended changes from, from Brian on TE 2? The 400 feet from existing residential?
Don't let me, don't let me jump in. I didn't particularly like that language, Commissioner Pennington, the idea of an existing residential structure. I happen to be staring at an aerial of this property. This is, this is very undeveloped. And I don't know what existing structures are there, but I think there's likely to be other structures there at some point. This is such a hot, a hot sensitive issue, given some of the cases we've seen with these, these venues. I think it's, I think we should basically restrict it at 400 feet from residential zoning. It's nothing to do with structures.
This, Commissioner Powers, I have a question about this too. Will the event center be open to the public or is it something just for the use of the residents?
It, it could be open to the public. And one other, one other thing we could do is we could restrict the hours of operation and say nothing, you know, that any event there has to, has to conclude by 10 o'clock, maybe. You know, that's, you know, just, I'm just throwing that out there too.
Commissioner Powers, I'll, I'll note for the purposes of the record and the staff report says that the, that this event center is for rent to the public for indoor and outdoor weddings, partings, meetings, et cetera, as well as various outdoor recreation fields, which are to be used by the residents of Wayne's. So it's intended to be a publicly available facility, which is more of the, creates additional concern. I was going to bring up hours of operation, so Mr. Kuhn's ahead of me, but.
Yeah, I totally missed that. I was completely thinking about this in terms of an event center for the residents.
I don't have an objection to them having the event center and trying to encourage people to come onto their property and learn about their organization. That's all, that's great. That's well and good, right? But the, 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 the event aspect of this creates such a problem and there's so much undeveloped land around this, it gives me, I don't want a wakeboarding park, part two, 15 years from now. So.
And of course, that is the issue.
400 feet. Brian, could you talk to us more about what you all?
Yeah, we'll just go with the 400 feet from the west side. So we'll have 400 feet from the east side, 400 feet from the west side. We currently operate at a facility up on eastern, just north of Memorial Road. It's the, it's been several things in the past catering and this is originally a single-family home. And they host events there, possibly, you know, wedding receptions, those kind of things. So, you know, we don't want something going on at midnight anyway, or 11, or whatever. Most receptions are probably over by 9:00 or 9:30. So we could say that there's no amplified music or sound after 10 o'clock out of that, out of that building, if we build one. So, so we're, I think we're okay with the 400 feet on east and west.
We're getting in danger of redrafting this PUD on the fly here, but the 400 feet from, from the west and east, I mean, does that protect us from the north as well? I guess you don't have it on your plan there, but there's nothing that, I mean, we're looking at a site plan. The site plan could change. And what's north of the property now is also vacant land. So I think we would need to include that, include that as well.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, 400 east, west, and north. That's fine.
And for my, my own sake, I think the limitation on hours for amplified music is helpful. Yes.
Okay. And we will add that, say 10 o'clock.
And just in discussion, oh, sorry.
What was that, Commissioner Pennington? I'm sorry.
We are maintaining specific plans as well. So that is a good for us.
So are you comfortable with those changes, Commissioner Pennington?
I am. And that's.
You're comfortable that you have, you have the language you need for a potential motion? Should we?
I think so.
Okay.
I'm putting in my concerns there now.
How do we get to talk?
Just a minute, sir, and I'll call on you, Mr. Jungroth, just one second, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cravens. I really appreciate it. Before your vote.
Oh, no, we're certainly not going to take a vote, I promise. Is any, any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, now I will ask if there's anyone with us that wants to be heard on this item today. Now's your chance. And since Mr. Jungroth, and if I'm saying that incorrectly, please do correct me. If you'll start out by giving us your name and address, we'd love to hear your concerns on this one.
Mr. Cravens, I apologize. My name is James Jungroth and I live in the state of California, but I'm from Oklahoma. So I represent the interest of five acres on the upper right-hand side of your 75-acre tract. The original owner of this tract was Mr. Boss. Mr. Boss deeded the property and he passed away. And Johnny Lee Smith is the applicant on this PUD that's proposed 1781. Wings Special Needs Community is a wonderful organization and I have been in discussion with them about our missing piece, this five acres. This five acres is unique because it has three lots on it. I went through the planning process with the city of Oklahoma City. It took many, many years and a long, long time in order to have three lots. I have electricity. I have grandfathered in septic, so it's not vacant land. And there are some material problems with this case number in the PUD 1781. When you raise your hand shortly, I'm sure, I'm just curious, are you changing, changing the existing zoning from R1 and then allowing the PUD? If that's true, then Brian Kuhn was my roommate at OU. And I wish that Brian had given me a holler and given me some room to do some input. If you could put the other map up there, there's one more map. This one, the planned unit development map, didn't get presented to all the landowners around the parcel. But this particular map has a horse arena, a hospital, eight bedrooms, a church, a restaurant, a football and soccer field, eight bedrooms, again, on the right side, a shopping mall, an Olympic-sized pool. And I'm just curious, how do we have input? Because I would really like to cooperate. I would really like to see this, this done for the special needs community. My wife and I are donors for the exact same thing here in California. But as drawn in, you'll see on the right side, the, the green and so forth. My acreage, I own two lots. My 90-year-old mother lives in the house that's there. Google Maps is not very efficient. You can't see the 200-foot water wells, but it's the highest because the TV towers are there. It's the highest property in Oklahoma City and from my two lots, I have a view all the way downtown. I just feel as if my family has had very little input. And, you know, I'm starting to think that I would prefer to delay things and talk with Brian and talk with the architects, Bockus Paint, and talk with my family. Because the impression I get is if I don't raise my hand right now on zone, I have, I have nothing.
Well, Mr. Jungroth, we certainly appreciate you joining us. That's why we're having this meeting. We don't necessarily get input on the, what the applicant's proposing until they bring it to us in this forum either. They are proposing to change the underlying zoning. That's exactly why they're here. They're changing it from R1 to a planned unit development. And this PUD is, basically provides all the use units that they're going to need to construct what you see before you. I would point out, for the purposes of just your own information, that what you see on that exhibit on your screen is a proposed exhibit. It is not necessarily where things would be laid out or how it would be constructed, which is why my colleagues and I are negotiating on things like a distance from any kind of an event activity from boundaries of the property and that sort of thing. While this is a proposed site plan, it is not a constructed site plan. So, but it will allow them to construct all of the items you see. Do you have specific objections that you want to give us to what you see before you as it relates to what they're proposing?
Yes, I believe they're usurping the view that would come from my three-bedroom homes. I'm planning on building three, three-bedroom homes with my brothers who live in Oklahoma City and my sister. It's going to destroy the view as it's written. That's why I was saying, in the spirit of cooperation, I would certainly engage with Ron D. Harris, as I have. He's the board chair. And certainly, Wings is a, is a wonderful organization. I support that. I'm very, very sympathetic to that. But I feel as if, you know, I'm trying to finesse things in a polite way, but I have to protect my family's property. And having right outside my mother's kitchen window, a medical facility, well, you know, she's been looking at cows for years. And those cows were owned by Johnny. And Johnny's cows have grazed on our five acres. We're just farmers. And there's some material problems here and there, but I think they could be worked out. Who knows? Wings has even thrown out the idea of a purchase of our five acres, which would complete their rectangle. It kind of sticks out like a sore thumb.
Mr. Jungroth, if I could, I think we, I think we understand your, your concerns and I want to make sure that we focus our conversation on things that we can, we can actually address today. A contractor in agreement to purchase between parties is not one of those items. So at this point, I do want to ask if there's anyone else that wants to be heard on this item today besides Mr. Jungroth. If so, this would be the opportunity. And I have Catherine Peters, who has raised their hand. Star six on your phone, ma'am, or space bar on your computer will unmute you and I'll take your comments at this time. You have three minutes.
Commissioner Cravens, I'm stepping away from.
Thank you for letting me know. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for our guest to join, I would point out to Mr. Jungroth that there are height limitations built into the PUD application. There is a height limitation of 40 feet and two stories. So it's, it's not an unlimited obstruction of his view.
That may be true, ma'am, but it is also 40 feet right in front of our property. And of course, I've been chastised. Well, there's a setback of 25 feet, et cetera, et cetera. The fact of the matter is, as this poorly drawn map is there, almost anything can be done. I'm asking, can I have any input on the next map?
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Powers. That, that's true. There are height limitations, of course, with, with these projects. Ms. Peters, did you, did you get your phone off mute?
Yes, I did. Can you hear me now?
I sure can, ma'am. Would you give us your address for the record, please?
I live in Hudson, Wisconsin. It's 808 Carmichael Road, number 287 in Hudson, Wisconsin. And I am a sister of James and David and John. And my mother lives on the property and she has enjoyed that property for well over 30 years. And we are trying to watch out for her interests as well as the rest of our family. And by putting up the. out for her interests as well as the rest of our family. And by putting up this PUD, it seems to me that that's going to create a lot of havoc with the neighborhood and her, and a lot more traffic, a lot more everything, a lot more people coming around, a lot more nu- noise, everything like that. And so I just wanted to put in my objection to this. And possibly, we could go to some sort of a postponement where we could talk to uh the board members and see if there isn't something that we can work out here.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. We appreciate your comments very much. Uh, anyone else that wants to be heard on this item today? PUD 1781. So seeing no other discussion, um Commissioner Pennington, I, I don't know, I don't know where you are on this. I, I'll jump out. I don't, I don't see a reason for a continuance on it. Um, i- it's not as if uh in my view that I'm going to support a change to an application because of an obstructive view. We, we, we hear these arguments and, and I'm, you know, I don't um understand this is a, a statement from perspective of policy, uh Ms. Peters and Mr. Jungroth, but I, I don't. Um, we hear all the time about property values, and it's going to change my view. And I've been looking at pasture, and this is an area that's going to continue to develop. It's smack in the middle of two interstate highways. As I noted earlier in my comments, there's a transit route that's been instituted along Kelly uh because of Kelly being a thoroughfare that connects uh the medical district, the Capitol District with as far north as, you know, frankly, Oak Tree and Edmund. So um this is a very, um, this is a very developing area. It will be in the years ahead. Uh, and I don't think a continuance is gonna, is gonna do anything to address some sort of a height restriction that would fundamentally change me coming back and saying, okay, we're going to limit height requirements of a building to 14 feet because it's going to obstruct a, a view. Um, that's certainly a step too far for me. Um, my, my main concern is protecting what is invariably going to be a lot of other development around this um that will occur in the years ahead. And frankly, I'm um very concerned about the use unit of the event center. I want to make sure that we get that right. Commissioner Pennington, I, you know, you, we've dealt with these issues um in your work previously, and they're very frustrating to not have tools to deal with. So um I hope we're all being thoughtful about that before motions are made. Uh, are there other commissioners who have comments at this time?
Mine would only be to echo uh what you said, Scott, on uh, on the view corridors.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Highsmith. Anybody else? Commissioner Pennington, you're, you have any final thoughts or comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I, I definitely understand and hear um, um, Mr. Jungroth and, and uh Ms. Peters. I definitely hear you. I understand that. But I just try to imagine if it was my own, you know, if it was my grandma that was living in that house where your mom is, is living. So um, one, I do want to be clear that the existing zonings are one. So I think these height limitations are very comparable to R1 zoning already. So even if we didn't do anything at all, if we voted down this proposal, somebody could still build a house next to your mother's house that is of the similar, of a similar height. So even if we did nothing, that is still on the table.
Commissioner Pennington, they could actually build 75 acres worth of houses.
Exactly. So that's, even if we took no action, that, that option is still on the table for them. Um, one thing that I also would like to let you know is that, you know, the commission in, in this capacity on rezoning is a recommending body to the city council. So there are, no matter, even if we, if we approve or even deny this proposal, in six weeks, it's going before the city council for final approval. So you have time between now and then. Again, even if we vote this proposal down, it will still be voted on again. So you still have an opportunity for input. The other thing that you should know is that we do have a requirement for a specific plan, which means they have to come back to us and explain to us and show us the actual plans of how they will lay out all of the buildings and all of the activities that will be on, on this uh piece of property. So I think there are plenty, I think the heart of your complaints is wanting some input into how things will ultimately look. And I'm saying that even if we were to approve this today, there are still opportunities for that to occur. Um, I do, I do think it would be uh, it would be good for us. I, I, I like the amplification, addressing the amplification. Um, I don't know, Brian, if you all have given any, I, I appreciate the, the limitations as far as um the distance uh limiting the uh ability for us to have the event space, a certain distance from the western and eastern and northern boundaries. But I'm just wondering if you all have given any further thought to any other mitigation um you might be willing to do or consider? Because we had a, an issue at Lost Lakes in uh further in northeast Oklahoma City, northeast 10th. And it was a serious issue of the nearby neighborhoods having loud music being played, even when it was during the day, that it was so disruptive that it makes it hard for those people to live. And so that's why we are bringing, pressing this issue of, we need as many mitigation measures as possible. And so I don't know if you all have given some more thought to that at all. And I want to do give you, want to give you just a few seconds to respond to that, Brian.
You know, what we might do, and I appreciate your comment about that there will be a specific plan. Uh, when we get to that level and determine where, if and when, or where that event center will be, I think we could come up with some more language uh to minimize any uh disturbance to any of the surrounding properties at that point, because it will come back before you. And that could be part of the uh site plan or the specific site plan approval. If that's, if that's, I mean, because we, we thought about the time, we've, now we've talked about this, the where as far as restrictions. Uh, and, and I might, you know, I'll talk to you also between now and that point is to see what other language is being used out there, which give, would give you more comfort to let this happen.
Well, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I wanted to just bring to your attention, Commissioner Pennington, as you're jotting down notes, one of the things we would make sure we need to do is reserve the right to review and determine appropriateness of the location and any mitigation measures at specific plan phase. We need to be very specific about that reservation of rights, uh, or it will be difficult for us or a future commission to have any ground at all to, to, to create accountability to, to review that again. So just bear in mind
We're good, we're, we're good with that.
I wonder, this is, this Commissioner Powers again, I wonder too if it might be uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there won't be notice sent with respect to specific site, uh, specific plan approval, I don't think. So I think it might be um appropriate, or we might at least consider whether it is appropriate to uh, you know, just make a notation in the file that when the specific plan uh is brought forward for approval, uh that those persons who are appearing here today and expressing concerns will at least be notified that it's going to be heard.
I, as, as opposed to altering statutory notice, I would much prefer that Mr. Kuhn commit in good faith, since he apparently knows the parties, to reach out and stay in contact with these people as this continues to move through the process.
I, I will definitely reach out to James. I don't know his sister, but I do know James. And, and uh I, we will, we will connect with him um to see what other concerns he has. Uh, and we will make sure that site plan goes to him when it is submitted to you.
We'll, we'll, we'll take your word on that. When you, you, you'll have to come back before us on something else. So we, we will take your, your word there.
Gotcha. You got it.
And I would encourage that before it comes to us, that you engage him, and so that when it comes to us, it's something that you're, are both agreeable to.
We will.
Mr. Chairman, one, one thing we might consider is on TE3. It says, "One specific plan shall be provided at the time of the first non-residential building permit." We might amend that to say at the time of the event center.
Yeah, I think we could do both. I think we could do it at the first, you know, non-residential building permit, and I think we could do it at the event center. I think we can make that its own, because we want to specifically review that project, you know, in its entirety. And, and we're going to reserve the right to add mitigation measures at that time. So I think we should just
What we were trying to get away from is a specific plan for every single building permit. Every time there's a cottage, every time there's a little bit of parking, so.
No, but I think the first one will give us a chance to see the layout, right? And, and then, and then the event center would give us a chance to deal with what our real concern is here.
I agree.
And, and we agree also.
I, I, I feel moved to say about this. This is Commissioner Powers. Uh, I, I don't think that any, I'll speak for myself. I certainly never anticipated that specific plan approval would be something uh that would be like building by building. And I, I don't think that's a good model. No, we don't need to see one every, for every building. But at the same time, at some point, and I was always thinking on the front end, we're going to see where things are laid out. Then if there's a change in that, maybe they come back with more specific uh plan approvals. But the idea that, you know, that you come forward with one for each building and that's all it shows, that's really not what the purpose of the specific plan was intended to be, in my view.
Yeah, this is, this is Commissioner Claire. I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. You know, if there was, there was a way that we got a master site development plan, specific plan that showed everything. Um, and then at a time where if that changed due to circumstances, then, you know, a revision would be submitted.
Janice, this is Brian. On that specific plan, uh TE3, it talks about it, the first non-residential building, but it says it includes an overall site plan showing common areas, areas of tree preservation, pedestrians. So you're going to get more than just this one, just the first non-residential building. We will submit a site plan that shows our entire site. Um, you know, our, what our game plan is for that entire site. Again, it's going to be built out over years. Uh, but it, it won't be just one building. We don't want to do that either. Um, but I don't have a problem if we, if we know day one where that event center is going to be, we can show it at the first plan and you, and you all can, you know, we can talk about what restrictions are going to be on that, or we can come back with a specific site plan for just the event center at the time that that happens.
That's great. And, and that comment was not intended for you. That's really a, an internal thing, a thing with staff. I don't know how we got off on this practice. But yeah, whether you're able to show us right at the beginning with your master design uh or not, you know, then if you, if you move it somewhere else, we can hash it out later. I, I'm okay with that either way on this particular one, partly because the placement of that building will be, you know, sort of the most critical, I think. So um I know you know what a specific plan is for, Brian.
So just so I'm clear, where, where are we language-wise on the site plan? Is this a broad enough language, Nate, Janice, on, on that? To, does this satisfy you as is? Or do we need to say more explicitly that we do want to see the overall plan? To Brian's credit, it, it does say that. It says the overall
Brian's making, Brian's making a commitment to provide that. And he beat me to it. But that, that commitment is in the language. All we need to add is the ability to review the specific location and mitigation measures surrounding the event center use. That, that's the only thing that you need to add into that language for the TE to accomplish what I think we're all saying.
Gotcha.
And I agree.
I think we're ready. If you want to give the shot.
I'm going to try. Uh, I move a pro of item 17 with the following amendments to technical evaluation. To amend to TE number one, we will uh, a sidewalk shall be, shall read as follows. The sidewalk shall be provided alongside East Wilshire Boulevard um when either of the following, when any of the following conditions occur. Um, 78 Wilshire is expanded. There are sidewalks added to uh the adjacent properties or prior to the last building permit being issued. And I guess we all, that also needs to say that, that, does it need to include the fee, the fee in lieu of building the sidewalks as well? Do we, is that, it doesn't need that explicit? Got it. Okay, then the change to TE number two would create a 400 uh foot setback from the uh western boundary and northern.
And east, west and north?
East, west, north, excuse me. I was about to say, I didn't know if east was already in the agreement. Finally, uh, we will amend TE3 to also include that at the specific plan stage, we will review the location and uh, and sound slash use mitigation issues for the event center at the time of
That's great. Just before we take a second on the motion, I just want to confirm with staff that they're comfortable with the TE's languages we've amended them?
Yes, I think the, we can work those into the PUD.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take a second on the motion. I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council uh on PUD 1781, subject to the TE's as amended. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And the application is approved unanimously. Uh, item 18 and 19 were continued. The next item on today's agenda is item number 20.
Item 20 is PUD 77.
Okay, no problem.
PUD 1787, application to rezone 12266 Woodland Hills Drive from PUD 75 to PUD 1787.
This application is 9.8 acre site. It's located on the south side of 122nd Street, just east of Coltrane. Uh, it's currently zoned PUD 275, and we're going to a new PUD with a C3 base with the intent of developing an RV campground. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda and recommends approval with five TE's. Uh, the applicant would like to discuss item, uh, TE item four. And Roger Simons or Bert Ballonge represents the applicant.
Uh, is Roger Simmons or Bert Ballonge with us today?
Bert Ballonge here.
Do you have anything you want to add to staff's introduction of your item?
Uh, I would say this, that um, this is a um, these are, this is an amendment to a PUD that was actually adopted in 1986. Uh, um, I have on the, on the call, Brad, Brad Simmons, uh, Simons, who is uh Roger's son. Also have Monty Jacobs, who has uh been working on the, the layout for their RV park. Um, and then uh the, the Johnson Associates folks are on here as well to answer some technical questions, if that's important. Um, but the um, the western part of this PUD, if you will, was 275. It was the remnants of 275, which I said was adopted in 1986. There's also, it's really not clear from the note, from the uh, the map, but there is a PUD reference 605, which is on the north side of the hotel site and actually fronts onto Holland Drive. That's going to be the main entrance to this uh RV um campground. There will be an entrance off, on and off of, of 122nd, but the map and the aerial is a little deceptive, because it looks like there might be an entrance coming off of uh Woodland Hills Drive uh into that little notch. That is not going to be the case. Um, and so there is a, I think it's important to note that what we tried to do in, in sort of uh, 605 was done in 1997. So what, what we're trying to do is, is develop a site on these two remnants of old PUDs. And um, and because 605's uses were consistent with what we were doing, we haven't, we're not disturbing 605 uh and the restrictions. But we are uh adding a number of uses uh and clarifying uh some things and, and also preserving all of the site screening protections and the setback, particularly on the west side, uh, to where we'll have no connection into the manufactured home. And I guess that there's now a stick frame home subdivision there as part of a PUD 1663 to the west. So um, the only uh really topic for discussion at this point, we know that we're going to go through a site approval process as we continue to work with staff to develop uh the RV park configuration, et cetera, uh, is this TE uh number four, uh, which asks us basically to remove um a uh restricted uh warehouse and storage um, uh industrial use that we had asked to be included. uh industrial use that we had asked to be included. So uh, we would, we do fully expect that this is gonna, this is an upscale RV park. The history of this site is, is that Simons have owned this property for well over thirty years. They uh were the original developers of the truck stops that front on I thirty-five. And so they're uh, you know, they've been in the neighborhood for a long time and are very uh sensitive to relationships on, on all four sides of them. We know that there's going to be residential, new residential zoning in place on the north side of one hundred and twenty-second. So uh, as I said, we're, we're preserving the uh perimeter protections uh that were in place under, under two seventy-five and also enhancing them. So uh, we just want to maintain some flexibility uh fifty, sixty years down the road if uh, uh this uh uh this needs to be redeveloped for other uses. Uh, we've added a, a number of residential uses and we'd like to keep the industrial use unless there's a, a strong feeling uh with the commission.
Mr. Bellanger, just to be clear, you're in agreement with the five TE's with the exception of TE four. And your position is that that's a use, that's a unit that you have allowed by right today, the way that it's zoned, and you're trying to preserve that use unit and incorporate it into your new zoning. Is that a correct summation?
Well, it, it, no, it is, it is uh the current two seventy-five PUD zoning allows for a number of uses in C-three use unit. And uh, as it turns out, the restricted industrial use is actually a C-four use. So it is a, it is not something that we currently have the right to do. But we are asking, and nor do we, nor do we currently have the right to uh some of the residential uses that we're asking to add.
So, understood. We can talk about that in just a second, why that's different. But eighty-three hundred point six zero is personal storage. The use unit you're specifically referring to is eighty-three fifty point one six. And that's, that's wholesale storage and distribution restricted. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So uh, just for the benefit of the commission, before I turn it over to Commissioner Pennington, a couple of things. On your screen now, you can see uh PUD seventy-five, if you look to the north, PUD sixteen forty-six is something that we just did. And just so you guys know, that as a, is kind of a refreshment of your recollection, uh that is an R-one, R-two zoned property that has been uh zoned and I believe platted, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, where residential properties are gonna be constructed. Uh, so the west is uh, is residentially built older properties which are in existence today. And then to the south, PUD sixteen sixty-three is also a, a residential PUD that we've done within the relative recent past uh that is, that is residential as well. My, my, uh, my issue with this, just so I'm on the record, is uh, I can't agree to the wholesale storage and distribution use because of how close it is to the residential. Uh, there's a lot more residential here than what meets the eye. I have no objection to the personal storage use. Um, the uh development of this as an RV park, I have a hard time finding objection to it. Even if we talk about maybe some mitigation measures or something that might be necessary that are not present in your application. But this area being right off of one hundred and twenty-second and I thirty-five, there's a number of hotels and truck stops and warehouse uses just to the east of this. So I view this property really as a buffer between it and the residential we've approved and the residence that exists, any approval that we've made recently. So uh, I can't support the wholesale storage and distribution use here, but I'm fine with everything else. Less than except maybe some mitigation measure. Uh, that's my two cents on it. Commissioner Pennington, it's your word, man. You got thoughts or comments you wanna make on it?
Yeah, they're similar to yours. I, I think my biggest issue is just dealing with the mitigation for the, the residents on the other side, on the west side. And I'm, I was really surprised when I was reviewing this, that there were no letters of protest, no issue. I have one of those fears that we're going to, we're gonna hear that when this leaves us, I'm gonna hear from uh Councilwoman Nice about why I didn't talk to anybody who was worried about this project. And so I'm, I think if we can uh Bert, if we could, you know, I don't know how much thought you all have given to further mitigation measures to the west, but I think you should probably be uh, give that some greater consideration. And, and I'm, I'm, I think if there's sufficient mitigation measures, I'm, I'm okay with the, um, with the storage. If, if you can prove you're gonna do something to, to ensure that it's less of a problem. Cause I think about the lighting in that. Um, when people might use their storage unit, that can be really disruptive to that residential. So I'd like to hear more about that from you, Bert, briefly.
Okay.
I, I would also say, Bert, before you address that, I would point out just to, for Commissioner Pennington's benefit and for everybody else, including uh Bert yours, that staff report indicates the proposed, the proposed RV park use is allowed up to twenty spaces per acre, so one hundred and ninety-six spaces. Although the site plan illustrates fewer than seventy sites, one of the things I think we could do is limit it to seventy spaces. Um, so we can, we can restrict the density uh and match what's being proposed by the applicant in their illustration. The other thing I'd point out is it says, it, it doesn't give us any feedback, so this would be something, Mr. Butler, you'd have to provide your, your additional comments on, but says the proposed campground and RV park includes outdoor uses that could have operational impacts related to noise or odor near residential, hence my reason for suggesting additional mitigation measure discussions. I'm not sure exactly what those might be um here. But I, I'd love to hear staff's input on that as well. Mr. Bellanger, I'll let you answer Commissioner Pennington's questions first, and then we'll get Mr. Butler's comments. I do see there's some attendees who have raised their hand and wish to be heard. Don't worry, I promise I will get there. Go ahead, Mr. Bellanger.
Uh, we're real briefly, I, we appreciate, I appreciate the comments and uh uh, what we did try to do, as I said, was to, to maintain the protections under two seventy-five that specifically, you know, anticipated a buffer along the west side. Uh, we also have the, the landscaping. There is a significant grade change from north to south and from um, from west to east that um I think are, will help with some mitigation. Um, to your point on the, on the density, um, I, I did uh fail to mention that uh we, we would like to clarify that um, we understand that, that uh, and we don't expect to be near the density limits of uh, of uh one hundred and ninety-six uh campsites, but we uh probably uh, we're still in, very much in the design and, and business modeling stage for this. And uh, we expect that it will be somewhere between um, probably around ninety uh to a hundred and twenty spaces. Um, even though, as you say correctly, this conceptual uh site plan only reflects seventy uh spaces. So we would like to main flex, remain some flexibility and probably note that we don't expect the, the, the number ninety to be a limitation, nor the nor the uh, uh number of units reflected on the, the site plan. Um, I think that in, in conferring with my um client, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, we do have person, I, I wanna be clear that there is, there was under two seventy-five and still is under this PUD as, as proposed, uh, the possibility in the future of uh it, personal storage being, being a, a permitted use. Uh, but we are willing to concede and I guess acquiesce as to the um, to the warehouse distribution restricted use, uh really in response to the chairman and also Commissioner Penning.
Look, I, I'm just one vote. I don't know where the other commissioners stand on that. I just wanna make sure.
I understand, I understand, but uh, I expected that um uh, that the additional request of that industrial use might be an issue and uh again, we, we wanna be very good neighbors. This is gonna be a uh, this is a process that uh you know, any configuration and ultimately uh for this deal is gonna have a site plan approval process and mitigation. Uh, perfectly willing to deal with mitigation issues at that time. I will say that we did, we were very, very careful to uh expand our notice requirement and, and uh send uh notices of this uh rezoning change to those individual homeowners that you mentioned to the west. So there were multiple parties that were uh included in this notice.
Okay, we may have a couple of folks that are that wanna be heard on that, because I've got a couple of people who've already raised their hand. But before I get there, uh, Mr. Butler, would you mind educating us a little bit about other mitigation measure concerns we need to be mindful of as it relates to this use adjacent to residential?
Yeah, we were just uh, you know, and thinking through the, the odor and the noise, that's just a reference to the you know, the, the, the kind of constant campfires and, and just the noise that would naturally come from, you know, people socializing, lots of campers in, in a concentrated place. Um, so that's really the, the concerns, you know, generators and things like that, that people might uh turn on to, to power their uh power their campers or, or whatever they might have. Um, fire, I know the fire department has rules for campfires, but we weren't able to find out what those were in time. So those are, those are kind of the compatibility concerns, um, you know, some of which I think could be dealt with, uh, with the, with the buffering. So yeah, those, those are the main concerns.
Okay. Um, at this time, Commissioner Pennington, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna go to the folks that have raised their hands. We can hear from, okay. Uh, first person that had raised their hand, and I saw that hand raised early, and I wasn't ignoring you, I promise. Frances Henry.
Yes.
Uh, if you could start out by giving us your name and address for the record and just let us know what you'd like to tell us about this item.
Frances Henry, one two one three six Woodland Hills Drive. And I would like to definitely oppose this. One, we have one RV park that's not even a mile down the street off of um Coltrane, and this is right behind mine and several other people's houses. And I agree with what uh Butler was saying about the noise, generators, people gatherings, campfires. Uh, there is absolutely no wall, no kind of barrier back there at all. Uh, they've already been clearing the property. I guess the uh previous owners, because I don't see the SODE sign yet, I guess their sale is pending upon their approval for this. But I am here to represent, I'm the HOA president here in Woodland Hills. And definitely oppose this. I mean, it's backyards, the transients twenty-four seven, the noise also causing animals that people here may have to start barking at all hours. Um, and one of our roads dead ends at that. No, we do not want to make that available for entrance or egress, just like we uh came before you before about the property right to our south. And just no, no, no. And I'm representing our thirty-one little homes here.
I understand. Well, we, we certainly appreciate you being with us again, uh especially representing your, your collective homeowners there, so. Um, appreciate those comments. That's, that's great information. And I, I'm looking at an aerial uh of the other RP, other RV park you are referencing. For those commissioners who may not have access to an aerial, it's just south on Coltrane, and in fact, the southern boundary of it uh butts kind of the vacancy of the land you see on our, on our site replans and our, our site plan and our staff report, just to give you some perspective on where it is. So it is not very far away from this location. So, um the other person who I saw a hand raise, I believe it was uh John Holland. Mr. Holland, are you with us and can you hear me, sir?
Hey, John's there.
John Holland. Just in case, uh, it's star six on your phone will unmute you. Um, and then the space bar on your computer will do the same thing.
John's on there somewhere.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Mr. Holland. Start by giving us your address, sir, your name and address for the record, and then we'd love to hear your feedback and thoughts.
My name again is John Holland. I happen to own a home there in Woodland Hills at one two two oh one Woodland Hills Drive. I also live, I currently live in Mustang, Oklahoma. The home in Woodland Hills is an investment property that I'm remodeling at this time. Uh, as far as people reaching out to notify us in the development, I never received anything about this change. It was just lucky that I happened to talk with uh the homeowner association and, and find out about this. Uh, I'm very concerned at how this is gonna ill affect our property values because of bringing in such a transient group. I'm, I'm worried about the safety of the children in our neighborhood.
Okay, any other concerns you think we ought to know?
Well, i- if you look at the uh planned unit development fifty-eight A and the picture that the north side of our property along one hundred and twenty-second street is a park area. The reason that park was put in, and the reason I know this, I was the original developer of this, this property. My family was back in the early eighties. And in that, that park, the, the reason that park was put there is because there's a forty-eight inch high pressure gas line that runs through there. It comes down across Woodland, Woodland Way and, and out across Holland Street into uh one hundred and twentieth street underneath it. Uh, I don't see anything where they're making any allowances for this high pressure gas line. And I'm concerned, this is something that's been totally overlooked.
Well, I, I, I can't speak to that. Um, ONG certainly gets record of these, these items and that's all a part of the development process when building permits are pulled and things of that nature, but that's certainly something that they're gonna have to contend with.
Well, I just wanted to go on the record that I, I am not in favor of this at all. And talking with my fellow homeowners out there, there isn't anybody that really is, is in favor of this.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Mr. Henry, Ms. Henry, excuse me, also made that point regarding her role as uh representing your HOA there. So I think we, I think we're clear on that. So we appreciate your time with us today.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Pennington, I'm gonna uh, well, let me ask very quickly if there's somebody else who, who wanted to be heard on this, who had not yet raised their hand. This would be your time. Uh, space bar on your computer, star nine on your phone, uh would raise your hand. I don't see anybody else that wishes to be heard on this, so.
If, could I, I'm sorry, Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Bellanger.
Uh, I just wanted to respond, uh, we'd be very much uh happy to reach out to Ms. Henry and uh with respect to the HOA, as we move forward on mitigation matters relating to the uh uh, the fencing and the uh setback along the west side. I would reiterate that we do not expect to access uh off of that notch that was apparently designed to access this site from the west and the northwest corner originally. And to uh Mr. Holland's point, um yes, we will have to obviously deal with a, a setback that will probably leave uh for the most part undisturbed the uh, the green space that he's referring to along one hundred and twenty-second. Uh, we do plan to try to do an entrance on hundred, a, a secondary entrance and exit off of one hundred and twenty-second, but the primary entrance for this property is gonna be off of Holland Drive. Um, um, basically at where the extension of one hundred and twentieth, northeast one hundred and twentieth dead ends into the property. So um, we, 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 we think we've dealt with that. Um, ha- again, happy to address any other questions and concerns.
Appreciate it. I think at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over to Commissioner Pennington. Um, this is his ward, so I think we need to see where we are. Um, where, where, where are you on this, Commissioner Pennington?
How, how I'm feeling about this, Mr. Chairman, is I really think we should take continuance and focus on the mitigation and Bert should come back with a more comprehensive plan that deals with it. Um, and, but I'd love to hear what other commissioners think. I don't, again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but.
I don't wanna break the bad news on the December docket, but it's awfully long. That said, I'm, I'm in, I'm in total agreement. I hate to do it, but I feel like uh, there, I'm, I'm not gonna get there today. I can't get there today. This is too concerning for me. Um, with, with the, the issues and compatibility there. Uh, as I recall, we, we forced uh Woodland Hills to connect to the neighborhood to the south, as I recall. I bet Ms. Henry remembers that better than I do. Um, and the neighborhoods to the north there, I, I just think that this is that, that buffer between the highway uses and what has become a very residential area. It continues to get residential as you go west of here. Uh, I just think we need to be very careful about this. I don't feel comfortable making those suggestions on the fly or trying to dissect it to the level that I think we need to at this point. Um, I don't know if other commissioners have different feelings on it, but I would be in favor of Commissioner Pennington's suggestion to continue this. And it may be that we need to continue it beyond December tenth. Anybody else have feelings on it? This would be the time to share them.
This is Commissioner Claire. I'm in agreement with, with you, Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner Pennington to, for continuance.
Okay, I'll put it this way. Anybody not in agreement with the continuance?
This is Commissioner Powers. I would, I am in agreement with the continuance, but I would just say, you know, my recollection, and I believe Mr. Bellanger made reference to this, is that this property drops drastically north to south and west to east. So, you know, a six-foot fence is not gonna be an effective barrier uh as mitigation for sound or light or anything else. The property that they're talking about is lower, and so all of that is going to be, you know, very visible And so all of that is going to be, you know, very visible from the existing residential properties. I'd also remind the commission that we denied an application for a kind of expansion of the office warehouse use that, that is south of where Holland dead ends there, you see on your map. It was, it was a little bit more sort of semi-industrial. So I, I think, you know, our, our concern for the residential development of the area is longstanding, and I, I do take that very seriously.
Yep. Appreciate those comments. At this point, it seems pretty clear that there's a demand for continuance essentially, and I don't hear any objection to that. Mr. Belanger, I'd ask you, do you object to a continuance in the first meeting in January?
Given what you've told us about the, I'm trying to consult with my client as we speak, but I, my recommendation was to accept a continuance. I would like to see if we could keep it on the December docket, and then if we need to move it without, if, if, if we can't make progress with respect to the homeowner association and staff between now and then, enough progress, then we would end up deferring it into January, but we'd like to keep a slot.
I, I, I continue to forget, even, you know, in spite of myself, that we, we only have, it's a whole nother month, it's not two more weeks. So I was thinking to myself, there's no way you're going to get there in two weeks, but you've got 30 days. So I'm, I'm okay with the December 10th docket. Come with a snack, if you would. It's going to be a long one. So with that, Commissioner Pennington, I think we're ready for a motion, if you want to make it, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to move to continue item 20 to the December 10th meeting.
That's correct. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Somebody, anybody? Commissioner Claire seconded it on Prime Gov. We'll take that as the second. So I do have a motion and a second to continue item number 20, PUD 1787 to the December 10th meeting. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote? Commissioner Hinkle voted in the affirmative. All votes have been cast. And that item is continued unanimously. Ms. Henry? Yes?
I was about to say, and Bert, you, you, I'm sure you have my consent information as well. Happy to help in any way in these discussions with Ms. Henry and, and the neighbors as well.
We, we would appreciate your assistance in coordinating that and coordinating a meeting and and working towards addressing all these concerns.
Bert, can we get with, can you and I, can you send emails to Debbie Martin and I about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, Mr. Holland, Ms. Henry, thank you for being with us today, expressing your concerns. Mr. Belanger and your client, thank you as well. And we'll continue this item until the December 20, 10th meeting. Next item on the agenda is item 21.
Yes, Mr. Chair, were we going to continue or not continue, move 21?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, yeah, so just quick point of information for the commission, item 21 is the plat for the corresponding PUD, which for some reason is item 27. So we're going to move item 21. I do not need a motion according to legal. We're just going to move item 21 to follow item 27, so it falls sequentially, because we don't want to do a platform rezone. That seems weird. So we'll go to item 22.
Okay. Item 22 is case number PUD 1785, an application to rezone 500 South Cemetery Road from AA and R3 to PUD 1785.
This is a 5.2 acre site on the east side of Cemetery Road, just south of Reno. We're going from AA and R3 to a PUD with an R4 base to permit a duplex development. Staff found it, found it to be in conformance with the urban low Luda and recommend approval, and there are no TEs. And Brad Reed with Crafton Toll represents the applicant.
Mr. Reed, are you with us today?
Yes, sir.
Anything you want to add to staff's introduction of your item?
So we actually rezoned part of this a couple of months ago. They were able to purchase one acre of the, the part that's zoned AA there currently. And so we're just kind of putting this together to make it cohesive. Like I said, the other part's already been done, and this just adds that one acre back into it.
Got it. Understood. I would note there are no TEs, and that staff does provide that the proposed duplex development and use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and surrounding development. As Mr. Reed points out, we sort of just did this. Commissioner Coffee, this is your ward, ma'am, so I'll turn it over to you for questions or comments of the applicant.
Well, I have driven this area. It appears to be very compatible with the development that is occurring in the area. I've had no questions or comments from the surrounding area.
Well, let's find out. If, is there anyone here with us today, members of the public that wish to be heard? If so, Alt-Y on your computer or star nine on your phone will let us know you want to be heard on this, and I'll pause a moment. Seeing none unless there's discussion from the commissioner, other commissioners, I'll take a motion, Commissioner Coffee.
I make a motion to recommend approval to the city council, PUD 1785.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Somebody on Prime Gov, maybe?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Commissioner Privet. I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1785. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And that application is approved unanimously. Good luck with that, Mr. Reed. Item 23?
Item 23 is case number PUD 1783, an application to rezone 11701 Morgan Road from AA and PUD 754 to PUD 1783.
This application represents 24 acres. It's located on the west side of Morgan Road, almost a half mile south of 122nd Street. Currently zoned AA, we're going to a PUD with an I-2 base to permit industrial development. Staff found it to be in conformance with the Urban Reserve Luda. Recommend approval with three TEs that the applicant agrees to, and David Box represents the applicant.
Mr. Box, item 23, pretty late to see you in the agenda. Anything to add to staff's introduction to your item?
I snuck one in on the consent agenda that nobody knew about, so. No, you know, this is kind of light industrial warehouse type development that, that we think is well situated in this area. We worked with staff and making sure that they believe it's being conformance, which is why they recommended approval with just the three TEs, all of which we agreed to. So behalf of answer any questions you might have.
This is in my, my ward, so just a couple of quick questions. Number one, you don't intend to use EFS in your facade regulations, correct?
That is correct. I do not believe it is listed as.
It's not listed. I just wanted to make sure.
No.
And then the, on your freestanding signage, how many signs are you eligible for here?
Let's see. What do you mean by eligible?
Well, it says all signs shall be monument with a maximum height of 12 feet and a maximum area of 125 feet, but it didn't tell me how many signs you can have. I would assume one.
No, it doesn't specify. I mean, we have fairly limited frontage. Let me get word from my client real quick.
This is a PUD. I think we need to specify it.
Give me one second.
You're fine.
Or we could just specify it by saying it'll only be one.
Yeah, we're fine with one sign.
Okay, so we knew our Commissioner Powers was going to be on that deal, so we will just say, I guess, I'll just add a TE. Well, actually, I can't. If someone who could make a motion would just add a TE that limits the signage regula, under the signage regulations, limits the applicant to one sign. That is the only other objection that I have. I have not heard from anyone on this particular case. Before I ask for other comments from commissioners, I'll just ask if there's anybody that wants to be heard on this item from the public. Alt-Y on your computer, star nine on your phone will raise your hand, and I'll certainly recognize you. I don't see anybody, any other comments from commissioners on this. I don't want to monopolize it since it's in my ward, but anybody, anybody concerns? If not, I'll take a motion from somebody. Just need to add a TE4 to limit the development to one freestanding sign.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 23 with the addition of one TE to limit signage to one.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
The freestanding signage.
Limit freestanding signs.
Yeah. I knew that's, yeah. Do I have a second on that? Somebody, anybody? Lisa, thank you. Commissioner Ismael has seconded the motion, so I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the city council on PUD 1783, subject to the technical evaluations and adding TE4, letting the applicant to one freestanding sign as outlined in the master design statement. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And that application is approved unanimously. Good luck to your client on this project, Mr. Box. Next item is item 24.
24 is case number P, SPUD 1261, an application to rezone 7201 Northwest 150th Street from AA to SPUD 1261.
This is a five-acre site located over the north side of Northwest 150th, just west of Rockwell Avenue. It's currently zoned AA, and we're going to SPUD with two tracks. We have an O2 tract on the front, which will be utilized for a veterinary clinic, and then retaining the home on the back for residential use. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low Luda, recommends approval, and there are no TEs. And Dr. Jared Roach is the applicant.
Mr. Roach, are you with us? Or I believe Mr. Heinz, Jeff Heinz is also representing the applicant.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Mr. Heinz, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My, my name's Jeff Heinz. I live at 5009 Morgan Road Northeast in Piedmont, Oklahoma.
You're going to be reviewing the plans on this one, too?
I, no. Probably forgot more than I, than I ever knew, but anyway, Dr. Roach is a friend, and, and I agreed, since I retired from the city a couple of years ago, I agreed to try to help him with his project here. Dr. Roach currently has a veterinary clinic to the immediate east of this property called 405 Vet Animal Hospital. He, he, he built that space out, moved there, I think, three years ago. And because of the growth of the area, he's already outgrown his current location and started looking for property. It so happened he had a chance to buy this five-acre parcel that's immediately on the west side of where he's located now, which had an existing residence and some pretty good room along the frontage to develop the new clinic. So probably about a year ago, I went down and met with city staff, and JJ was good enough to walk me through the process and came up with this scenario that, that we thought would be beneficial to everybody there, keeping the residential on the north side where it abuts the, the resident addition to the north and then developing the clinic on the south. I, the O2 regs on the south, I don't believe we, we needed any variances on it, so pretty straightforward. My, my client is actually in Minnesota, meeting with his architects on the project as we speak, so he couldn't be here to, to talk about his project here. But I'd be glad to answer any questions if I can, if you have any questions about anything.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. This is in my ward, so I'll, I'll lead us off. I had spoken to Mr. Heinz about this, just asked that he agree to move the dumpsters 50 feet from the west boundary line of the property, which he was in agreement to. He's absolutely right. There is a retail shopping center on the hard corner of Rockwell and 150th. My daughters drag me there for donuts, usually about once a weekend, I think. There's a second shopping center being constructed due west of that, which will not show up on an aerial, and then it would be this property. So I have no objection to this. This is essentially extending the use that exists there now to a more accommodating facility. And they're in agreement to prevent the dumpsters. Everything else seems reasonable to me. And as it was pointed out by staff at the introduction, there's no TE. So with that one TE of moving the dumpster to 50 feet from the west boundary, I'd support the application. And I'll just ask if there's anyone here, members of the public that do want to be heard on the item. I didn't hear from anybody, but we give that opportunity. Alt-Y or star nine? Seeing nobody, I'll just ask, out of respect from other commissioners, if there's anybody who has additional concerns on this. Hearing none, I would certainly take a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Coffee, I recommend approval, SPUD 1261.
With the added TE for the dumpster?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? It's seconded by Commissioner Powers. Thank you. So I do have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1261, adding a TE to limit dumpsters from 50 feet from the western boundary. Cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast.
I'm still waiting for Commissioner Powers.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry, I still can't see who's, who has and hasn't voted. Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
She did it.
Okay. And that application passes unanimously. Good luck to your client on this one, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Next item on the agenda is item 25.
25 is case number SPUD 1263, an application to rezone 4505 South I-35 Service Road from SPUD 607 to SPUD 1263.
This is a four-acre site. It's located at the southwest corner of I-35 and southeast 44th Street. We're going from an existing spud to a new spud with a C3 base to develop a charter school. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban medium Luda and recommends approval with two TEs that the applicant agrees to, and Tim Johnson represents the applicant.
Mr. Johnson, anything to add to staff's introduction of the item, sir?
This is Mark Zizel, one of the shared evidence with Johnson and Associates. We do not, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We agree with all the TEs.
Okay. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, my friend. Do you have thoughts or comments on this one?
I have more. Anybody signed up to speak on it?
Uh, no, I do not have anybody sign up on the sheet that I was given by staff, and no one has raised their hand. Alt-Y on your computer or star nine on your phone would do that action?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. We were seeking one point of clarification on the TE. We would like to specify that it is one tree per island. The amount of trees was not specified in the TE.
Any objection from staff on that?
No, that's just fine.
How many islands are there, just out of curiosity? I kind of know that parking lot, but I don't remember the islands.
There are, there are three, tough to call them islands, maybe peninsulas is a better term. But there are three that we think we've identified that staff was referring to for plantings.
And Commissioner Privet, if I may, can I just get clarification from the applicant on how many signs you intend to have? It says existing signage is permitted, which is fine. An additional freestanding tenant sign shall be permitted, so there's going to be another sign. I think it's fair to make the other commissioners aware of how many signs you would have at that point on the property. I don't know the answer to that. And then it just says, in the next section, it says, "Any additional freestanding signs within this PUD shall be ground signs, with the maximum size being eight feet and 100 square feet." Do we need to put a number on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's currently zero signs, I believe, for the property, so.
Okay, so this would be the, the only sign, because the building signs there, there are some, are there not some pole signs along, what is that, 44th?
I mean, I think Taco Mayo, once you get to Taco Mayo, maybe.
There's nothing.
Commissioner Hinkle, I didn't hear you. Could you restate that? Commissioner Hinkle, I didn't hear you. Could you restate that?
Excuse me. It's right down the street from our office and there's nothing there, pole sign wise. There's businesses on the building that have signs and Epic is already there on one of the buildings, but there's no pole sign on forty-fourth or on I thirty.
So should we just say, uh, one pole sign shall be permitted, but then I think we need to, we need to put a number then on the additional signs? I would think. I don't know if you have a different opinion of that, Commissioner Privet.
Uh, I don't see any reason to be an additional sign to the one if it's going to be all Epic Charter now.
Uh, this is Mark Zizal. I think.
Besides, you know, school signs, maybe.
If we could limit it to one additional eight foot monument sign. Currently it is a multi-tenant building and if Epic changes their, uh, the amount of space they're taking up, we would like the other tenant to be able to have a sign off of forty-fourth.
So the way to do that then, uh, just for the sake of crafting that into a TE, Commissioner Privet would just be to uh, add a TE that says only one pole sign shall be permitted, one additional monument, freestanding monument sign shall, shall be permitted, uh, with a maximum size being eight feet and square footage being a hundred feet. That would clarify their, the master design statement for their sign provision.
Got you.
That's the only thing I saw. I don't know if anybody else has any other concerns.
This is Commissioner Claire. I know, I know. We talked about trees and islands, but just to clarify, I'm looking at an aerial. So there's nuts, there are no islands in the parking lot. There's a couple of islands to the north of the building. Um, that are kind of longer islands. Are those, are those the islands that are, that are mentioned?
Yeah, I think they, the little skinny one up there on the north side and then the north side of the building or the northeast corner of the building.
Okay.
And then, uh, probably somewhere along the service road or on the southeast, far southeast corner of the building.
It, it's, it's also really hard to tell this from the aerial, Nate, but I'm very familiar with the site from years back. The building, the topography there from the parking lot on the east side of the building to the parking lot on the west side of the building is dramatically different. In fact.
You walked in on the east side, you walk in on the second level and.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, there's a big retaining wall there.
Yes, exactly right. So you want to go bingo, you go in the, in the first floor. You want to go to school, you go on the second floor. Anyway, sorry.
No, that's all right. So, so Mark, just to clarify, you wanted to limit it to one, one tree per, per those islands?
Uh, one tree and the way we were calculating it was that there were three peninsula islands that were more, uh, sorry, if you, if the aerial could be pulled out, I think it's kind of see they're on the north part of the building, the north corner.
Uh, this is Jeff. Uh, if I can just clarify what, what staff was trying to do, that the former PUD, uh, six oh seven, it required trees on twenty foot centers. And I'm trying to get clarity on, on where that is exactly. It may just be the, you know, the, the islands, uh, between the, the street and the parking lot.
Yeah, Jeff, I would assume that'd be along I thirty-five, wouldn't it?
That was my assumption, too. Trying to, I don't know if anybody, your staff, uh, JJ might have the six oh seven language.
I don't have it in front of me, but that's my recollection is that, uh, there's very little grass, but there is a strip along I thirty-five that I think those trees were supposed to be planted, but they were never planted.
Yeah. Well, then I mean, I would say that that ought to be pursuant to the landscape code, you know, for street frontage trees.
But I think for any future building permit, we're agreeable to that. What we were attempting to do was, uh, not be required to put in landscaping for the entire site simply for a sign.
Okay.
I think the issue was that those, those were required in the previous spud, but they never got, they never got installed.
Well, wouldn't that just, I mean, wouldn't that just be a zoning, there's a zoning violation then?
Uh, they could be, yeah, but we just wanted to carry it over so that, you know, we, we could, if we don't, then we couldn't enforce that.
Yeah, how, how long has this been? This has been here longer than I can even remember.
It's an older spud.
Forty-four.
Well, Commissioner Privet, this is your, in, in the effort to sort of move it along, this is, this is your call. If you want to, you know, propose a motion that includes one tree per island, do it. If you want to include more, do it and we'll see where we are. If that's the only thing holding us up here, let's move it.
Yeah, I mean, practically there's no trees along that corridor anywhere. Um, I mean, we're just going to put a row of trees there randomly. It just seems kind of weird. I'm good with one tree each. It's better than what we got.
Okay, well, we'll see where we fall. Before we do anything though, let me, let me ask, because I'm not sure if I did or not. Um, if there's anybody here that wants to be heard on this item today, alt Y on your computer, star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And I will pause just a moment. Don't see anybody doing so. So Commissioner Privet, if you want to make a war, uh, a, a motion, excuse me, we'll see where we are.
Okay, I will. Uh, make a motion to, uh, approve S or recommend approval of S P U D twelve sixty-three subject to the, uh, listed TEs, adding one TE of one pole sign and one additional monument sign allowed of eight foot max by a hundred square feet.
Commissioner Coffee, second to motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the city council on S P U D twelve sixty-three, subject to the technical evaluations as amended. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
A very happy yes. That corner really needs a shot in the arm.
Well, I think all votes have been cast, I think. And the application is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Zizal. Uh, item twenty-six. Nope, continued. Item twenty-seven. And we'll hear twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pinkson. I'm going to step away for just one moment.
No problem.
Item twenty-seven is PUD seventeen eighty-two, an application to rezone twelve one sixteen Southwest twenty-ninth Street from AA to PUD seventeen eighty-two.
This is a one hundred and fifty-four acre site at the southeast corner of twenty-ninth and Chekhol. It's going from, uh, current zoning of double A to the PUD with three tracks, one being a commercial tract at the hard corner of the, uh, arterial intersection. And the other two tracks being single family residential. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda and recommends approval with seven TEs. Applicant agrees to all, uh, with the exception of TE three. And David Box represents the applicant.
Mr. Box, anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
Yeah, briefly, uh, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, Brad Reed, who's here for the project, is also on the line with us. Um, Cindy, could you show the, uh, aerial, please? Or that one worked. That actually sent, go, if you can go back to the first one you showed. There you go. Uh, so as JJ stated, we agree to all the TEs except for three. Um, TE three asks us to, um, have larger lots on that southern line of the subject PUD. Um, we respectfully would ask to not, uh, be required to do that. The reason being, if you look, uh, to the land south of us, it is a area that are, uh, comprised of five acre tracks. Uh, many of them are vacant. It is an area that is anticipated to be redeveloped. Uh, and, and so because staff has asked us for a, a street stub into that, I believe staff would agree with us that it is anticipated that'd be redeveloped. So the need to have those larger lots on the south side, I think goes away with that. And I'll tell you, if you look at the map, you'll see PUD seventeen fifty-four, which is in the southeast quarter of this section that came before you just about a month or so ago. Uh, and a similar request was asked and we made a similar request to you. Uh, we agreed to provide the stub to the west. Uh, and in so doing, we believe that that area to the west will redevelop a single family now that there is sewer and water. And therefore we shouldn't be required to have larger lots on the west. You did agree with the argument at that time, uh, so we would ask for the same consideration here. We will provide that stub to the south. Uh, but in so doing, we recognize that the south is not going to continue, uh, in its current state and rather will be redeveloped as something else because sewer and water is there, it's going to be single family. It'll likely be traditional, single family. So we'd ask to have, um, the lots that we provide, which are the six thousand square foot lots, uh, be there instead. So all the TEs except for three.
And just to, just. I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, what was that?
It says, uh, instruct sidewalks, it says, including a creek, uh, creek crossing. Um, we need to request that we don't have to cross Mustang Creek with the, with sidewalks. Um, it's a, about six thousand CFS comes down through there. It'd be a large bridge through a FEMA floodplain, so we request that we don't have to cross Mustang Creek.
Brad, I think that is a TE on the plat, not the pod.
Sorry.
Um, so, Mr. Box, just to confirm, we, you, we just need to strike TE three is what you're requesting. I just want to make sure I got that right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, okay. Uh, I would just note, uh, for the purpose of the record that, uh, in May of twenty twenty, we approved an amendment to the comp plan that lifted the urban reserve layer, um, and designated a subject site in the land of the west as urban loan intensity. Uh, and with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Coffee. Uh, this is your ward, ma'am. Do you have thoughts or questions or comments on this one?
No, I have been in conversation with Mr. Box and, uh, I do agree that, uh, we recently, uh, did grant, um, a variance as it related to the street stub in the montage, uh, um, PUD seventeen fifty-four, so I'm in agreement with the request for that particular variance.
Any, any, um, concern over the change in lot size, Commissioner Coffee?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Any, any concern over the request from the applicant to strike the TE about lot size?
Uh, no, and I've not received comments or questions from, uh, the public.
Okay. Um, is there anyone here with us today that wishes to be heard on this matter? Speaking of members of the public, anyone that wishes to be heard, uh, this is your time to do it. Alt Y on your computer or star nine on your phone, raise your hand. I'll pause a moment. Seeing nobody, I'll just quickly ask if there's, uh, other commissioners who have any concerns on this. If there's not, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Coffee and we can see about a motion. Sounds like it's your show, Commissioner Coffee. Are you prepared to make a motion on this?
Yes, I am. I would make the motion, recommend the city council approval of PUD seventeen eighty-two striking technical evaluation number two.
Number three.
I'm sorry, number three.
Yeah. Do I, I have a motion. Do I have a second? And, uh, Commissioner Powers is second to the motion, so I have a motion to second to recommend approval on PUD seventeen eighty-two. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Outstanding. All votes have been cast. And that application is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, item now is item twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Reed, this will be your time to shine.
Item twenty-one is, uh, case number C seventy-two twenty-six, preliminary plat of Creekside Village, also located south of Southwest twenty-ninth Street and east of South Check Hall Road, as well as a variance to section five point three, one point D point five of the subdivision regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step away just for a moment.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Martin, go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, so this, the developer's proposing six hundred and twenty-eight single family residential lots in multiple common areas on one hundred fifty-seven point five seven acres, yielding a gross residential density of three point nine nine dwelling units per acre. Public streets, water and sewer improvements are proposed. Uh, the zoning for this site is, is the one you just recommended approval for. Access to the development will be taken from four local street connections, South Check Hall Road, three connections with Southwest twenty-ninth Street and a stub is proposed to the south. Um, they are, there are, uh, seven TEs with this. Uh, for, for T number two, they will be requesting the variance so that they don't have to provide the street stub to the east. That is a pretty stable neighborhood that has private streets. Um, the same variance was granted when montage was approved. Uh, they would have had to connect to the north on that one into the same neighborhood. Um, they also are requesting that we delete the, uh, requirement to cross the creek with, uh, sidewalks uh, along the section line roads. Um, otherwise they're in agreement with the remainder of the TEs and Brad Reed and I believe David Box both are on the line in case you have any questions.
Yeah, once again, uh, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive and, uh, Mr. Reed. Um, so as, as Jared said, uh, of the seven TEs, uh, we do agree with all of them, but we do need variance on two. Uh, it is a private street neighborhood. It's a stable neighborhood, so we would seek, um, that variance to not connect. As I mentioned in the previous application, we will connect to the south, so we are providing connectivity where, where possible. Uh, and then on six, we agree, except to the extent that it would ask us to put a sidewalk, uh, across that creek. That creek carries a tremendous volume of water, uh, and, and would be very, very difficult, uh, to construct. And so we do intend to have sidewalks throughout, but we do ask, um, to not construct a, a sidewalk across that, um, creek.
Uh, and let's address that TE language quickly. Um, so just to be clear, because it, it, the way that it's constructed now, it says including across creeks and or drainage areas. Could we say including drainage areas but excluding Mustang Creek?
Brad?
Or does the drainage area language propose a problem for you, too?
No, as, as long as this Mustang Creek is, uh, is specified, we don't have a problem with other drainage areas.
Okay, so it's, so it, so inclu- including drainage areas but excluding Mustang Creek?
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be the language you would, you would deem acceptable. Okay. Just wanted to get that clarified for our discussion. So, uh, and then the other TEs, is this the variance to TE two? Because, uh, you guys agreed to the connection to the south. Just to sort of re-stating where we are. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Commissioner Coffee, this is, uh, your ward, of course. So do you have additional concerns with the preliminary plat that coincides with the zoning item?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Box, would your client, uh, consider particularly aesthetically, uh, building a little footbridge across Mustang Creek?
I don't, I don't think it would be safe. I mean, it carries way too much volume, uh, of water, uh, to make it to where something like that would be feasible.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with Mustang Creek, but, uh, just a thought.
It's about a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred feet, uh, span that we would have to do. So the feasibility of that is pretty far back.
I would, I would also note that their argument appears to be aided by the fact that they didn't take a road across Mustang Creek either. They broke the development into a northwest and a southeast piece, each of which has two means of ingress and egress. I mean, so they clearly were trying to avoid it. It, it does appear from the aerial to be quite substantial.
Yeah.
Not, I'm not an engineer, so staff has a real disagreement with their ability to do that. I'd like to hear that, but otherwise I, I think it's a reasonable request.
This is Commissioner Claire. The only other question I have is, you know, or is either, either road, uh, scheduled for widening where, where a crossing could be constructed by, you know, road widening, by a road widening project?
Well, the, the creek runs through the center of it. Um, like, so the, if, if, if you look at the way they've laid out the plat, uh, Commissioner Claire, you've got a, an entrance on the far south side. There's another one a little further to the north. And then that, this portion of the development is also acceptable in the far northeast corner. And then, uh, uh, in the northwestern triangle, if you will, you've got an entrance off of Check Hall on kind of the western side. There's actually two. And then it appears to be another entrance along the, the Southwest twenty-ninth Street. So nothing crosses Mustang Creek except for the arterial roads. And they're not objecting to the sidewalks anywhere except Mustang Creek.
Why, I know that was, my, my interpretation is, is that the, the TE is requiring sidewalks along the section line roads and they're, they're open to constructing those just when they'll, they will stop when they get to the creek and they won't cross Mustang Creek on either end.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Out, out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brad, you addressed that.
So we, we can agree to pay it like a fee in lieu of for the area that we don't cross. Um, but again, if, it must, if it, Check Hall or twenty-ninth is widened, um, it's a major undertaking for the city even on putting in a bridge that would even be wide enough for us to add, uh, a sidewalk across there. So, uh, we can agree to a fee in lieu of for our share of that, that we don't construct. But, uh, it's, like I said, it's almost a physical impossibility unless a major renovation that those roads are done.
That seems fair.
That's actually a good, good, good point, Commissioner Claire. I wasn't, I wouldn't follow you on that, but now that makes, it makes total sense. I'm with you. I think the fee in, fee in lieu of is fair. So that just needs to be a TE. And, uh, for Commissioner Coffee and our collective benefit, I might have staff recommend some language there for us. Somebody, anybody? JJ. Jeff.
Oh, there we are.
So, language, language specifically for that crossing of both Check Hall and.
Yeah, we just need it. We need a TE eight that's going to require the applicant to pay a fee in lieu of for the portions of sidewalk that they're not going to install over Mustang Creek.
Hey, you just said it.
That's perfect.
Well done, Chairman.
Are you, this? Mr. Butler, are you comfortable with that language?
Yes, absolutely. I was just checking that there's, there are no, there are no bond, there's a resurfacing on Check Hall Road, but that's, that's not going to build any bridges or anything. So it'll, it'll probably be a while before things happen out there. At least there's nothing in our current bond for it. But yeah, that language, that language works well.
Commissioner Coffee, are you comfortable with that language, ma'am? This is your award.
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear the exact language, so.
It's okay. I'll, I think I can, are you comfortable with the concept of the fee in lieu of?
Yes.
Okay, I think I, I think I can help you, um, when we get to that point. I'll just ask quickly, we did talk about this as a zoning item, but I will ask for the sake of asking if there's anybody here, members of the public that wish to be heard. Alt-Y or space bar. Actually, that's both on the computer. So Alt-Y or star nine on your phone, raise your hand. I don't see anybody, so I think we are ready for a motion.
All right.
Um, essentially Commissioner Coffee, just as a, just kind of to circle, circle back and sum it up. Um, the applicant is in agreement with the TE's with the exception of two, and we're going to make a change to six. However, at the outset, we need to, uh, I believe make a motion on the variance. So the first thing we need to do is make a motion to approve the variance that's listed there in TE two of the staff report.
Yes, I make, I make a motion for approving. Excuse me, for approving preliminary plat, case number C 7226. With the technical evaluations, one eliminating technical evaluation two.
Commissioner Coffee, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. If, if you, if you can on the, on the variance, which is TE two, just make a motion first on that variance.
Okay, removing the technical evaluation two, which is the variance. Approving technical evaluate, oh, okay. Removing technical evaluation two. I make a, remove it.
We would need to motion just to approve the variance.
Okay, I'm sorry. Make the motion to, to approve the var- the variance.
That's fine. Uh, can I get a second on the motion to approve the variance and then I'll, I'll read the specific variance into the language.
Commissioner Powers, I second the motion.
Perfect. I have a motion and a second to approve the variance to section 5.3.1. D. Five of the subdivision regulations as it relates to C 7226 preliminary plat. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast. And the variance is approved unanimously. So now we just need a, um, motion to approve the item, Commissioner Coffee. And you can leave, uh, so we'd be approving with TE's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And then we're going to amend TE six to say developer will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk along the section line roads and along the common areas. Uh, including drainage areas but excluding Mustang Creek. TE seven is approved as written, and we're adding TE eight, which was just to say that a fee in lieu of sidewalk shall be paid for the sections of sidewalk not installed along the section line roads by the applicant. Are you in agreement with that motion?
Yes, I do. I still move.
Of a motion, do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Powers. I second that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for 7226, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast and that application is approved unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Box and Mr. Reed on this one. Item number 28.
28 is PC 10697, application reason 3,000 Northeast 17th Street from R4 to C3.
JJ.
Gotcha. This is a half acre site located at southeast corner of Northeast 17th and Bryant. Currently zoned to R4, we're going to C3. Uh, the applicant intends to put a restaurant on the site. Uh, we recommended an amendment to C1 based on the, um, the surrounding residential that's nearby. And Felix Scott is the applicant.
I'm present. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. Thanks for joining us today. Start by giving us your name and address for the record, please.
Felix Scott, Jr. 3,000 Northeast 17th. OKC 73121.
Mr. Scott, thanks for being with us today. Do you have anything you want to add to staff's introduction of your item?
Yes, I'd just like to say that this property was formerly a nursing facility, a convalescent nursing facility. Uh, I grew up three blocks from this area. This is the old business district for this area for these three communities that surround it. Uh, there's currently only one corner store there to serve the community. No other businesses there except for a, uh, there's a beauty salon, one block north of my location. Uh, I'm proposing to take the building and, and bring some needed businesses to the community. Uh, in particular, a laundromat, uh, dry cleaners drop off site. Uh, I'm a pro legal by profession. I have my pro legal office there. And then we're going to do a deli type, uh, food restaurant and some fresh food items. Uh, and then I'll also have, uh, propose to have some other, uh, small office space available.
Uh, Mr. Scott, is it fair to say that you intend to, um, keep the existing building? So you're just kind of retrofitting the building for these users?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
And, and I want to make sure that I capture this for the sake of our discussion. You listed a laundromat, a deli. Uh, retail sales, and what was the other thing you said? Oh, you said offices.
Yeah, offices and a barber shop and a barber shop.
And a barber shop.
Yeah, we got a beauty salon, uh, in the next block, so I was going to bring in a barber shop.
Got it. Staff has suggested that you amend the application to C1. I don't believe that C1 would allow those uses. JJ, you can shake your head yes or no, if what I'm saying is true.
I'm going to step away real quick, Scott.
No problem. Thank you for letting me know, Mr. Privet.
I thought he said they would, that they would allow those businesses.
Uh, I'm going to ask him to confirm that. I, I want to be very clear, uh, with Mr. Scott that you know exactly, if you, if you were to agree to that amendment, you understand the limitations and the differences between C1 and C3. I sure, I sure wouldn't want to send you on through the process. Only for you to get through city council and then realize you couldn't do what you intended. That's.
Why? Oh.
JJ, do you know the answer to that?
I'm looking right quick and I.
While he's looking at that, Commissioner Pennington, this, this is your word, sir. I don't know if you have other thoughts or comments or concerns on it. While he tries to identify that, but I'll certainly.
The only thing, one, I think, Mr. Scott, thank you because I, this development is, is much needed in the area. And, um, my only other comment is if, if it can't, if C1 can't accommodate what he has in mind, then I'm okay with the C3, especially seeing that the C3 is all along that area. I should hope that Mr. Scott is somebody who grew up in the area, understands how important it is that, you know, we have those businesses and that they be respectful of the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood. So. Um, also for the commission's benefit, this area is very, very close to the Lost Lakes area that we were discussing earlier. Um, so obviously we want to be very sensitive to the needs of the people who are, who are there. But that's all my comments, Mr. Chairman, just after JJ can confirm.
You know, my, my only thought on that, Commissioner Pennington, I certainly defer to you. I'm going to an aerial right now, but at least on the uh, on the zoning map, it shows residential there. Would, would it, would it, I mean, would it make sense in your view? You know the area better than I do, but to have him do like a PUD? Or I guess it's less than two acres, an SPOD, would that make sense in this instance? Or you think C3 is acceptable i- i- just a base zoning regulation?
I, I think C3 will probably be fine, especially since the C3 is, is there for all the other adjacent.
Right, it is to the, I mean, as you can see, it's to the north, to the south, and I mean, so, okay. Um, JJ, what say you on the uses?
This is, this is Commissioner Powers. I would like to see it amended to C1 if it permits the uses he intends to make of the property.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah. JJ, what say you on that front?
Uh, it will, it will allow the uses he mentioned today. Um, in the future, who knows, but, uh, for today, C1 will work.
So he can have retail sales in C1?
Yes.
He can have, uh, a deli. What would that classify as? That would be sit, restaurants.
Restaurant.
Okay. It will allow a laundromat?
He didn't say a laundromat. He said dry cleaners drop off.
Uh, no, laundry, laundromat also. It was, it, it used to be one right across the street from me.
He, he said laundry. Yeah, I, I heard you, Mr. Scott. And then he said a barber shop?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be, what is that, personal services?
Yep.
Yep, okay. And then offices?
Yes.
So that's all fine?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, just, just because you're pro se with us, Mr. Scott, I just, I just want to be clear that if you, if a use deviated from those, it is at least possible that you would have to go back through the process to rezone the property.
Understand. Now, tho- those are the, those are the intended uses of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, we, now we, we don't, uh, we, we fine with, with, with what we have and our plans are now, I don't have any expectations to, uh, change them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if that's true, uh, I'll, I'll ask, is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on this item today? This is PC 10697. Alt-Y on your computer, star nine on your phone. Seeing nobody, Commissioner Pennington, I'll leave it up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 28 that, and that it, that it be amended from C3 to C1.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Powers. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, uh, recommend approval to city council on PC 10697. Amending the application to C1, please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast except for Commissioner Powers? There it is. And that application is approved unanimously. I can now see who's voted. Outstanding. Okay.
This is a, I'm going to, time, time for my break now, so I'm going to take a quick.
Yep. Item 29, let's keep it rolling.
Thank you.
You bet. Good luck, Mr. Scott. We wish you well with your project, sir.
Alrighty.
As, as Commissioner Pennington said, it'll be great if you can, uh, bring some life and business and some sales tax back to this corner. We'll all be better off.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're working on. Alright, thank you all a lot.
Okay, item 29 is case number PC 10698, application to rezone 10633 Northeast 63rd Street from R1 to AA.
Okay, this is a 13 acre site located on the north side of 63rd. It's just west of Westminster Road. Currently zoned R1 and we're going to double A to permit agricultural uses. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban or rural medium, uh, luda and recommends approval. And Benny Powell is the applicant.
Mr. Powell, are you with, oh, actually, Mr. Powell, are you with us?
Oh, there I am. I'm, I'm letting go of my, spitting my spacebar. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, no problem. Start out by giving us your name and address for the record, sir.
Uh, Benny Ray Powell, Jr. I'm at, I live at 10633 Northeast 63rd Street, Spencer, 73084.
Okay. Anything you want to add to staff's introduction of your item?
The only thing I want to add, um, I, I was a little concerned about when I, I actually received a notice at my house for this application, but the only thing that threw me was, there was a little bit of, the one word that in agriculture use for this zoning or i- in agricultural zoning that the use of medicinal marijuana could be used, and that really threw me for a loop. Thus, one letter of opposition from my northern neighbor who I respect dearly. Um, that, that's only that threw me. I have no use of medicinal marijuana whatsoever. I'm not affiliated with it, have no interest in the entity that's affiliated with it. Um, I'm a competitive team roper. This will be equine and cattle purposes only.
Well, Mr. Powell, we appreciate that. Um, I'll tell you, I'm not sure that that's for us to inquire about anyway. If it's allowed within the use, it's allowed within the use. And I would point out to you and your neighbors that, uh, should, you know, you not own the property longer and somebody come along differently. If the use permits it, it, it's, it's permitted. So, um, I, I'm sure that your neighbors appreciate hearing that. Um, the fact of the matter is, and, and I'll let Commissioner Pennington speak to this, I have no objection because it's clearly appropriate zoning for the area and our staff report says as such. Um, so, says the, um, AA district requires a minimum lot size of five acres, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, there's no objection in, from development services on anything. Surrounding zoning is compatible, so, um, yeah, I, I don't have anything. Commissioner Pennington, you got anything on this one?
Nope, full support.
Okay, let's see if there's anybody here that wants.
Mr. Chairman, I have to admit that my curiosity has now peaked. I want to, I wonder if the uh, notice that was sent listed all of the possible uses in agricultural or whether medical marijuana was for some reason singled out.
I have no idea.
I don't mind if I read this really short sentence. Can I read the really short sentence that's on the notice?
Yes, please do.
Sure.
Uh, it says property use. The purpose of this request is to change existing residential zoning permit development for agriculture uses that may include medical marijuana industry uses, period.
So my question, I guess, would be to the staff, why in the world does it say that?
I think that's a fair question.
Uh, because it's true and the council is very concerned about potential medical marijuana locations.
So it's, it's, it's really to create, um, it's really to create better notice for the public that that use is included with what would, essentially you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know it if it wasn't included. You wouldn't perceive that medical marijuana could be allowed by that use unit. So they've added a layer of notice essentially there. Is that?
Correct.
Uh, excuse me, who added a layer of notice there?
The city council.
By ordinance?
No. The council has become very concerned about where medical marijuana uses can be located. And have, uh, and we have tried in our notice to let neighbors know that it could be a potential use.
I think that is a bad idea, and I think I would like some, uh, input from legal about that. And if we're going to list all the uses that are available, that's one thing. And it lists that among others, that's one thing. But it seems to me that that is very purposeful singling out of a single use. And as I recall, there was quite a big to do in the legislation to not allow municipalities to do that. So I, I'd like some input from legal on that, and I think it's something that we ought to discuss as a matter of policy.
This is Susan. Um, JJ's right as far as the history on that. We did originally draft an ordinance that would include that, but now since we are planning on going back and, and redoing some of our, um, zoning ordinances on medical marijuana, I'm thinking that that won't be an issue. But, um, there's nothing wrong with giving additional notice.
But this is very specific notice. It doesn't list all of the uses that are available. It lists a specific use that's available.
Right, and, and JJ's right that that was an. Right, and JJ's right that that was an issue that was brought up at City Council that they were concerned about, and that's why we decided to go ahead and give more notice, and be more transparent of what type of uses could be included.
Susan, the bottom line is that it's legal for you to do that, it does, there's no issue there from a legal noticing requirement, from your perspective, okay. So, is there anyone here, members of the public, that wish to be heard on this? We did receive a letter in our packet, it was about the medical marijuana use, but the applicants addressed it, I've made the point that it doesn't mean a future owner couldn't use it for that purpose, so I think we've been clear about it. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on this? Alt-Y on your computer, star nine on your phone, raise your hand. Seeing none, Commissioner Pennington, this is...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I would like to say, I did write a letter to the staff for this application, and the ice storm kind of got in the way a little bit, but on November 5th, I received an email of confirmation of recipient of my letter via United States Postal Service to the zoning staff from Mr. Thad Johnson. The, my, the opposition letter, again, I agree with what my neighbor said, everything in it, because I take the same agreement to it. Her letter was produced on November 4th, which Mr. Johnson emailed me a copy of for my records, I immediately turned around and that same, on the 5th is when I received his email, but I've replied to him and asked him if, and confirmed if he received my letter, and he said he did, and then when I saw the docket that my letter was not included, I responded to Mr. Johnson, and he said it was sent in too late, and according to the notice, the notice says it needs to be there by Friday at noon on November 6th.
Okay, well, we got the notice of opposition, and we've heard your response to it, as I said, I think we're clear about what your intentions are, and I think we've also made it clear that the use that it's being zoned for would allow for medical marijuana from somebody else in the future, so, the facts are out there, there's nobody here on the call that wants to be heard, I think we're ready for a motion, I'll leave that up to Commissioner Pennington.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion, but I do want to reiterate Janice's point, and I hope that in future, maybe study sessions or whatever we have in mind for this commission to think about some administrative issues, I'm fully against the idea of singling out that use unit. I think that it contributes to the hysteria about medical marijuana, that in the temperature it needs to be turned down considerably on that issue, it is legal, it is allowed, we need to be okay with it, in my opinion, it's not for us to decide whether it's okay or not, it just, it's allowed by law. So, anyway, saying all that to say, I move approval of item 29.
And I will move, I will second that motion, but I also would like for us to talk more about this, if we're gonna send every single case that involves, you know, a retail use out with a notice that this could include a dispensary, you know, every single case is gonna become wildly, wildly disproportionately controversial, it's just, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10698, please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast, and the application is approved unanimously. Item 30.
Item 30 is PC 10695, an application to rezone 3001 Noma Road from R1 to C3.
This is a six-acre site on the south side of 29th Street, just east of Post Road, it's currently zoned R1, applicant is requesting C3, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda, and recommends approval, and Imogen Clark is the applicant.
Is Mr. or Mrs. Clark with us?
She is, I think she needs to unmute, I see her.
If you want to unmute, it would be star six on your phone, if you're doing it on your computer, it'd be the spacebar.
There you go.
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can, thank you for joining us, start by giving us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Imogen Clark, and my address is 2640 West Country Club Drive, Oklahoma City, 73116. My husband and I, Lehman Clark, are requesting this rezoning, because this property could actually have a southeast 29th street address. This property has more footage along southeast 29th Street than it does on Noma Road, it has 660 foot of frontage on southeast 29th, and 437.75 foot footage off of Noma Road. Entry to the property at present is 110 feet off of southeast 29th onto Noma Road, traffic does not travel down Noma Road and is confined to this corner only. Our property is surrounded by multiple commercial businesses along the northeast and west side of southeast 29th Street, to name a few, propane business, paint and body shop, salvage yard, automotive shop, plumbing business, DeLisi Company, and a trailer park, that's just a few. I'm sure you're familiar with 29th Street and how busy it is, and it's always had a high-traffic count in this area due to Tinker Air Force Base. Our property is separated from the residential area by a fence line and a row of cedar trees on the south and west. We purchased this property in 2016, at which time it had a house that was completely falling down, full of rats and roaches, and several large metal buildings that needed to be removed. A lot of cleanup was required, and now it is completely clear buildings, it's a beautiful piece of property with green grass that is mowed constantly. The improvements that my husband has made to this property has improved this community already 100%. We sincerely think the rezoning would be another improvement to the Noma Road community and to the Oklahoma City business community. We do have a potential buyer if the property can be rezoned commercial.
Ms. Clark, thank you very much, we appreciate you being with us today, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Commissioner Privet, I think you had some things on this item, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, my main concern, and I think it might be with the next, the landowners nearby, would be the straight C3 zoning, I know staff says that it's, you know, compliant next to C4, which is true. The applicant, she's looking to do, I think, a storage, you know, personal storage, but I don't think we're gonna get there without C3, so, or a PUD. Sorry. But, and again, I'd like to hear from the residents.
Well, yeah, and I'll, I mean, I'll just say, I certainly understand Commissioner Privet's perspective, but I also understand, you know, staff's perspective in that this whole area is lined with commercial industrial along the frontage, it does seem to get, and I don't know, and you may, I'm looking at an aerial, but it seems to get, like, the next, maybe like quarter section is vacant land, but then it goes back to commercial again, and you've got, you know, automotive, I see an automotive parking lot, it must be some sort of auto repair shop further east, there's like some sort of warehouse building, so, I mean, there's a lot of commercial there along 29th to the applicant's point. I guess I'll ask, because we got some letters and it seems like there's some consternation there, is there anybody here from the public that wants to be heard on this? This would be your chance to do it, Alt-Y on your computer, star nine on your phone, looks like I have someone who's raised their hand, can't totally make out the name because of the way that it's listed, but Donna, if you can hear me, love to hear from you, yes, ma'am, if you'd start by giving us your full name and address for the record, that would be great.
My name is Donna Pryor, I, my address is 14975 North 300 Road in Morris, Oklahoma, I am on behalf of my father, who lives at 3117 Noma Road, which is immediately to the south of the 3001 Noma Road proposal.
We did receive the letter in our packet from you, Ms. Pryor.
Yes, and I would just like to reiterate, we don't, he doesn't want to live next door to commercial property, and I don't either in the future. The Clarks originally did live right at the north end of Noma Road, across 29th, they recently sold that residence to DeLisi, and purchased the 3001 Noma Road property, I am very familiar with its condition, my family's lived there since 1972, and, yes, they did a lot of work cleaning it up, but they purchased it as residential property, and, but my understanding is that they don't want to live there, so, thus, they're trying to get it changed for their profit benefits.
Understood, we appreciate you joining us today, Ms. Pryor, thank you very much for your comments and information in there. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard on this item today, members of the public? I do not have anybody else raising a hand, again, just to be sure, be Alt-Y on your computer, star nine on your phone to let us know you want to speak. Seeing nobody, Commissioner Privet, I'll turn it back over to you, man, and we'll see where the commission is, look, I'm sort of torn on this one, I understand what you're trying to do, I think the area is very commercial, one other point of, you know, just logistical information for everybody that may not be as familiar, Post Road, which is the arterial to the west, does not have access off of 40, so what happens is all the traffic comes off of Douglas and comes down 29th Street, so, this area, you know, carries quite a bit of, sort of, area traffic, it's a through street, which is all the more reason why it's become and developed as a commercial corridor, because you don't come to another interchange until you get over to Anderson, which is another mile and a half to the east, so, that's the reason that, you know, so much commercial was developed on this east-west corridor instead of along the north-south corridors nearby, it's because there's no highway access, so, you know, I don't think it's inappropriate, Mike, it's your ward man, so, you tell me what your thoughts are, what you think we should do here, and see if there's any other commissioner comments.
I don't think this intended use is inappropriate at all, it's just what, you know, I guess the unknown of what it could be, that kind of gets me, but...
May I comment one more time, please?
Sure.
Ms. Pryor briefly, yep.
She commented that it's separated by a row of cedar trees, the cedar trees are only towards the west, not past the house of, yeah, they're not up to Noma, and Noma Road is all residential, I mean, there's an agricultural area across the street that's a sod farm, but the owners of the sod farm live there, Noma Road is all residential.
Noma Road is indeed all residential, I would have to take issue with this, this property is more oriented to southeast 29th than it is Noma Road, and it does front the arterial, that's what makes it different from the other parcels along Noma, with the exception of the property that's on the east side of Noma, so, again, I understand what you're saying, to me, this is, I don't know, if other commissioners want to weigh in or have feelings here, to me, this is a very straightforward C3, but if the other alternative, Commissioner Privet, if you're really uncomfortable with it, would be to, you know, have him do a PUD and come back, that would be the other alternative.
Yeah, and I spoke with the applicant about that, too, as an option, probably the only way that I would really get on board with it, actually, but...
This is Commissioner Claire, I was just gonna add, I think, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think maybe the concern is having access to this property off Noma Road, and, you know, with the fronting, you know, maybe restricting access in a PUD to only southeast 29th would help alleviate that, and also, some buffering considerations along the south side.
This is Commissioner Powers, I would agree with that as well, I think, you know, Noma Road is an established residential area, I think it deserves to have that kind of buffering and protection, and the only way we're gonna be able to do that is through a PUD or SPUD, whichever it is.
Those are fair comments.
Yeah, but, I do, I like those comments a lot, that helps me.
I'm another vote in favor of what was just said, I think this needs to be a PUD, for sure.
Well, now you got a majority, so, Ms. Clark, if I can, I'd make the suggestion to you to take a continuance, and for the purposes of, you're basically gonna have to refile it as a PUD, that's gonna require more notice to be sent out, so, I would suggest either the first or second meeting in January, as an appropriate continuance timeframe, to give you an opportunity to get the PUD drafted and written, and come back to us, so we can discuss sort of mitigation and protection in Noma, it sounds like there's enough commissioners here that want to do, that go that path, are you in objection to that?
She could take the negative recommendation and go to City Council if she thinks she could get a better outcome there, I don't, I just don't want to, I want to make sure she knows what her options are.
Yep, that's, I agree, so, Ms. Pryor?
I do think we have fairly, you know, given her our concerns about it, they really have to do with buffering and protection, mitigation of that commercial impact on the residential area of the south, so, with that, she can, you know, form a PUD that'll be workable.
Yep.
Okay, that sounds good, I'm not that familiar with a PUD, but I think I can get some help and get that done, does that also include a change of address for the property?
No, it's just, no, it's no different than you zoning it C3 like you are today, it's just instead of it being C3, it's gonna be PUD, add a hyphen and a number, and it's gonna have a C3 base, and so...
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about that, if she's going to orient the property toward 29th, and it's not gonna take access onto Noma Road, whether that would require or suggest that she change the address of the property, I don't, I don't know about that, but staff...
Well, it's not part of the zoning process, is my point.
Ah.
Yeah. Ms. Clark, your two options for January, ma'am, would be January 14th or January 28th.
Okay.
I don't know that either of them is particularly, I mean, it's just, that's up to you, how much time you want to give yourself.
Well, I think January 14th, I'd like to shoot for January 14th.
Okay, and you're okay with that, and you do understand that you could, you had five people's opinion about how they intended to vote, so presumably it would have been a motion to deny, you could go to City Council with a recommendation to deny.
That's, that's okay, I think I'll just go forward with the PUD.
Okay, all right, well, at this point, Commissioner Privet, I'll put the ball back in your court, we need a continuance to January 14th, and we can move on.
I'll make that motion for a continuance of case number PC 10695 to the January 14th meeting.
Commissioner Powers, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to continue PC 10695 to the January 14th, 2021 Regularly Scheduled Planning Commission meeting, please cast your votes. And Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that continuance is approved unanimously, Ms. Clark, you know, as you work on the PUD, you heard the concerns of the commission, limiting access, creating a buffer, you're gonna want to look at the uses that are allowed, probably some mitigating some of the more, you know, kind of offensive uses, I will also just tell you, we have a propensity to require that dumpsters and certain uses be located so far away from certain residential uses, so, those are things you'll want to talk about as you're going through the process, and staff can be of great help to you as you go through that, and I know Commissioner Privet would welcome your outreach as well, as you work on the PUD, if you have questions or want to get his feedback on it, so, good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
For sure.
Thank you.
Item 31?
Case number CE 1042 is an application to close miscellaneous east of North Hudson Avenue and north of Northwest 7th Street.
This application seeks to close...
This application seeks to close some streets and alleys in the vicinity of Northwest 70th and Harvey Avenue. Staff had some concerns about closing Northwest 70th Street, the east-west connection. And the applicant has agreed to drop areas C and D, which can include Northwest 70th Street. And we are, would recommend approval on the remainder. And David Box represents the applicant.
Mr. Box, anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
No, just, just as JJ said, we agreed to withdraw C and D. Had a call with Chamblys and Ms. Sarah Welch yesterday. And was told that if we agreed to keep 71st Street open, that being area C and D, that they were not objectionable to the balance, that being A, B, and E. So with that, we'd ask for your approval on just areas A, B, and E. And as C and D were previously withdrawn.
All right, I will just add too, from the staff pre-meeting, that A was added or was acceptable or not requested to be removed or denied. Because, and if I put incorrect words in staff's mouth, please correct me, but that it's essentially not really buildable anyway. There's a lot of challenges associated with that. So, and it would not ultimately foreclose the connection because you have a Hudson easement still in place and Robinson goes to 71st. So that's the way the application essentially got reformed, just to approve A, B, and E and removing only C and D. Commissioner Powers, this is your wards, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do not have, you know, I'm not a huge fan of closing and eventually vacating streets or really alleys for that matter. But, you know, this, this area is one I think that has long been contemplated for sort of large block development, industrial development. And I, I would not have been able to support this if they had not amended it. But having done so, I think I can support this application as it stands.
Okay, any commissioners have objections to this? Hearing, hearing none, but seeing nods, I'll ask if members of the public are here with us that wish to be heard on this item. CE 1042, I do have someone who, who's raised a hand. I don't have a full name, but Cody, recognize you at this time, star six or spacebar. It looks like spacebar. There you go.
Hi there, Cody Thompson, address is 420 Northwest 70th Street, Oklahoma City 73116.
Okay, what would you like us to know?
I, I wrote a letter opposing this and really my opposition was track CD. So I just, I'm really just jumping in as to receive confirmation that that has been completely eliminated. Because, you know, there's, there's obviously going to be a lot of development in that land, which I'm all for. However, you know, there just needs to be the right, it needs to be thought out logically. And there needs to be the right amount of traffic flow through. Whereas that 71st Street will have direct access to Broadway Extension versus coming down my street. And, you know, having to turn left, turn right, all of those things. So I just really wanted to take that time to confirm that C and D have been removed from this, from this application.
That, that, that is correct. Those, those easements are not going to be closed by this application.
Thank you.
You bet. I do not have anybody else who's raised a hand, so Commissioner Powers, I'll turn it back over to you. I think we're ready for a motion.
As a, as a satisfied customer and happy user of the Lucky Dog Lodge, I, I agree with those statements and I appreciate you taking the time to come and be heard. But having, having amended the application the way they have, as I said, I feel comfortable supporting it. So I will move approval of the application.
Coffee second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, recommend approval on CE 1042 for tracks A, B, and E. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that application is approved unanimously. Item 32?
32 is case C 7223, final plat of Rockwell and Memorial Marketplace 2, located south of West Memorial Road and west of North Rockwell Avenue.
This is a three-lot office commercial final plat. It conforms with the preliminary plat that you recently saw at the southwest corner of Memorial and Rockwell. There are only two TEs, I believe, with this one. I believe we may have some representatives from Public Works and the Turnback Authority on the line to, to speak to this one as well. But it does conform with the approved preliminary plat. Alec Bass and David Box, I believe, are both on the line in case you have any questions.
Mr. Box, Mr. Bass, anything to add to the staff's introduction of your item on this one?
Yeah, I, I want to take a few minutes and reserve the right to respond to, to anything that Public Works or the OTA may, may come on and say. But at the outset, I want to make, make clear that this is a very straightforward application. Frankly, it should have been on consent docket, but for, I think the letter that you have in your packet from the OTA. This is a final plat that conforms to the preliminary plat, but more importantly, conforms to all subdivision regulations. Any assertion whatsoever by Public Works or the OTA that there are limits of no access along this stretch are simply not true. Furthermore, any assertion that there are has no relevance to your consideration. What the OTA is going to tell you would be akin to a neighbor coming in and waiving a set of private covenants around. It would have no relevance to your consideration, much like the OTA's arguments here. Your consideration is whether or not this plat.
Mr. Box, if, if I, if I can, yes, I, we understand. And, and I, I don't even really need your comments. I think what, what I want to state at the outset, this is a ward aid issue. So designer of the final plat conforms to subdivision regulations as they relate to non-residential developments, and it conforms to PUD 198. We saw a preliminary plat on this, we had the discussion. I received subsequently a letter along with members of city staff about the item from Todd Gore, representing the OTA. I responded to that in kind. I spoke with Susan Randall about this at, at the meeting beforehand and got her insight as to whether, and this is important for the commission, there, this issue of limits of no access has any bearing on our decision as it relates to the final plat. And the answer is, it does not. And so as a result of that, I don't really want, I don't want to get, go down this rabbit hole. We're, we're not, we don't need to have the conversation for an hour about whether or not that has some bearing, because it doesn't. And we get into this all the time with private access agreements and we tell them, there's a forum for that. The forum is district court, go file it, you guys fight it out, that's not for us to decide. And I don't think there's any difference here. Having said that, I'm going to be respectful of the fact that it is 445. And anybody who wanted to be heard on this item has been waiting awfully patiently, although not on a wooden pew. So you're welcome to comment on the item. So I, I am going to give time for brief comments, but I just want to say, for me, this, the conversation about the no access thing is not going to have any bearing on my opinion that this is a very straightforward administrative application on a final plat, and it should be approved. So with that, I'll ask if there's anybody that wants to be heard. I know that there is. So, and I'll provide the five minutes and we'll listen, because you've been waiting all this time. But I, I'm, it's not going to, the, the limits of no access discussion isn't going anywhere. So if there's other things we need to talk about, let's do it. So with that, I'll pause and star nine or alt Y? I don't have anybody. Is anybody from city staff who wants to address it?
This is Todd Gore with OTA.
Oh, yeah, hi, Mr. Gore.
I, since you're not rep, you know, don't want to hear on limits of access and how this will not be allowed in the future. I mean, I guess we can just leave it at that and you guys vote accordingly. And OTA will not allow the driveway to be constructed.
And, and Mr. Gore, that's, as I said, I, you know, I, I got your letter, I did. And I did respond, and I just want to make sure you got my response. This goes back to the preliminary plat in September. And, and I think you have a, a means of recourse for that discussion. So I, I have no doubt you're going to have it. So no disrespect intended, except that for the respect of everyone here, not a conversation we need to have. Debbie Miller, it looks like you want to say something.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, this is Debbie Miller, Public Works and Assistant Director. And there's a approved agreement between the OTA and the city council, which identifies this area as limited to no access. So until the litigation is complete and that has been decided, the city doesn't have any authority to grant access to Memorial Road at that point. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that, that's, that's where we're at on that.
Understood, and you, you, you agree with me, Ms. Miller, that that's something that's going to take place more than likely at district court and is not particularly relevant for our group? Is that a fair assessment from your vantage point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, for purpose of the record, may I respond briefly?
Briefly.
Yes, so the assertion that limits of no access were established by the OTA submitting right-of-way plans to the city is simply not a legal mechanism by which you can take a property right, which access is. We intend to move forward with the plat, we intend to seek a driveway permit. And if it's denied, then we will be in district court.
We get all that. And if it is, if it is denied, then you've got your recourse and you know exactly where to go to get it. So we get it. I don't know if other commissioners have comments again, just so nobody's like, sort of thrown off kilter on this. This is a, your staff report is as straightforward as it is from our perspective. And that's why I'm, I'm trying to jump in front of this, so we don't end up in an hour and a half rabbit hole. Any, any concerns from commissioners on the plat? Hearing none, I would take a, a motion from a commissioner, since it's in my ward. I'd appreciate somebody making a motion to approve it.
Scott, we had one, Eric Lehrer was raising his hand. Come on, recognize him.
Yeah, yeah, Chair, Chairman Cravens and commissioners, I know you don't want to hear about limits of no access, but I did want to respond briefly to Mr. Box. The OTA has a statutory right to limit ingress and egress from its rights of way. And so that's, that's really what's at issue here, is the OTA's statutory right to preserve its limits of no access. So whether they were on the construction plans or not, the OTA has an express statutory right to control access. So with that, with that said, I, I will certainly excuse myself, understanding that you don't want a debate on limits of no access and respect that. So thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Lehrer, I apologize, I didn't see your hand up. I'm glad Ms. Privet brought that to my judge, and I did not, I did not ignore it or intentionally not calling you. So appreciate you taking the time to be with us.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Powers. I appreciate all of those things that you said earlier. But just out of matter of curiosity, if in the end, if we approve this application and in the end, it turns out that in fact, there's not going to be a driveway onto Memorial Road, what does that do to the approval that we have given? Will they have to come back with a new plat? I, I want to know what happens just in case on the odd chance that Mr. Box is wrong about what he thinks is going to happen next.
Understood, and, and I'll jump out and let staff correct me whenever I say is wrong. My suspicion would be that the plat would be approved because they can't punch into that area, they would have access to Rockwell only, would be my assumption, based on where it's shown in the, in the plat. But Jared or, or somebody from Legal?
You think, I'm sorry, you think that the plat would stand even without the, without the access to Memorial? And they would just be limited to their access? I, I don't like that outcome at all.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm guessing for the sake of allowing staff to correct me.
I'd like to know. Is there somebody who feels able to offer an opinion on the subject?
Somebody, anybody?
I can offer something, I think. I think it would be similar to, slightly different. I mean, if we had a, if we had a case, for example, that, that came in and was approved by the planning commission, and then it was determined that there was a drainage issue that couldn't be overcome. The subregs allow us to administratively alter the approved final plat to, to deal with those issues. This is not necessarily a code or a subdivision regulation issue. It is a little bit of out, outside of that. But I think if it is determined that, that we aren't allowed to approve that entrance or, or street location, then it would be kind of the same thing. We would be able to alter the plat as needed before.
I don't like that solution. I don't like that solution at all. We've looked at a preliminary plat, now we're looking at a final plat that's based on a, a given configuration that allows for access on two sides. If that's not what's going to get developed, I think we need to have another look at that.
That's not, that's not possible.
Well, I don't know whether it is or not.
Well, to Janet, to that point, I think what Janice is suggesting and is that if we, if we were to approve it and for some reason they decided not to, or that David doesn't win on this issue. But I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, do, do we need to approve a final plat in order for it to be ripe enough for the litigation to continue?
Yes, that's my point. Because if that's the case, then yeah. What we're doing is we're, we're letting, we're going to, we're going to let this play out. If, we, we have no basis by which to deny the final plat. It conforms with everything in our subdivision regulations as we're told. What we're doing by approving it is we're allowing them to go forward. And when they pull that driveway permit, that is where, if it's denied, they have the ability at that point, it's, it's ripe for litigation. So if at that point they do, and you know, I think I would probably be, I'd probably feel a lot differently about it, Commissioner Powers, if this were a very large scale development or this had real, this is a small corner, commercial development. Everything around it is developed, with the exception of this small corner. If it's denied, they're going to wind up coming back with some other commercial development that takes access from Rockwell. Or they're going to do, or they're going to want to replat or whatever. The applicant's going to be incentivized at this point, but they can't take action until they're denied. So, and we don't want to create that at the city level, I can tell you that. So my, my, my opinion, I mean, as I said, we talked about this in the, in the pre-meeting with Legal, because I wanted to really understand, you know, what was before us and what was the issue. My strong suggestion is that we approve the final plat, so they can go hash this out in district court and figure out what the difference is. If they move that road, six feet or eight feet or don't build it, it has no consequence to, to, to us, in, in my view, zero.
Oh, I, I don't have any problem at all with approving it, so they can move forward with their litigation and figure out where they are. My concern is, is that in the event they are not allowed to take access onto Memorial Road, we have a piece of property that we have looked at and approved for development in one configuration that is now not going to be developed in that configuration. And, and that's problematic for me.
Anybody else have feelings on it?
The OTA will close it if they.
This, this is, this is Commissioner Carter, this is my thought. I, I think it works in the configuration, whether that access is there or not. I would think that the developer would want to construct up to a point. And, and if the agreement with OTA ever expires or changes or whatever, and at some point in the future, they're able, able to make that connection, then it's there and ready for them. But the development works where they have that access or not, it's not as convenient, but.
I, I agree. I need somebody to try a motion.
Commissioner Clark, I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for C 7223. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the application is approved unanimously. Mr. Gore and Mr. Lehrer, I, I do appreciate you guys joining us today. And again, absolutely no, no disrespect intended. I just wanted to keep us focused on the things that we can actually take action on. So my best to you and Debbie Miller, thank you for joining us to provide some insight there from your part as well. Item 33?
Item 33 is a resolution of the Planning Commission approving the proposed capital improvement plan fiscal year 2021 through 2025. And we have Erica Van Der Sypen here to give us an introduction and discussion.
Oh, yes, the five-year CIP plan is updated every two years. And as Jeff, Jeff said, this is for the fiscal year 21 through 25. To the, the CIP was introduced at the last meeting. And then we had discussions today at a study session. And it is up for action to be adopted. And I'm just here to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ms. Van Der Sypen. I, I will say today, I, I remember the presentation from 2018, that was like pretty early on in my planning commission career. And I was blown away by the amount of work that the various departments have to do to. blown away by the amount of work that the various departments have to do to put things like that together. I was reminded how much work it is today. I think the most stunning thing that I heard on the entire call today was that a lot of budgets for projects that are sort of in the pipeline now stem from 2007 geo-bond money. I mean, that just really speaks to the amount of time and planning and effort and structure it takes to, you know, actually get through these capital projects and get them completed. It looks really simple when you guys put a really pretty binder together and a bunch of pictures and send it to us, but it's an incredible amount of work. So I appreciate all the staff and people who were there this morning, the department heads and leaders of the city to give us that insight. I don't particularly have any questions. So I'll turn it over to the other commissioners to see if there are specific questions before we move to adopt the resolution.
No questions, but I would just reiterate that appreciation for the amount of time and effort, especially so since I kind of threw a monkey wrench into this at the last minute and asked for us to do a study session and go through it the way we have in the past. I really, really appreciate the time and effort involved, and also the efficiency with which we managed to get through the amount of material that we covered today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Powers. Anybody else? How many comments?
Just to say again, thank you to staff. The reports were excellent. I'm really, I know Janice threw us for a loop, I think, at first, but I'm so glad we did it because I feel so much more informed and I'm so grateful for all the work that was done to make this happen. So thank you, thank you.
If you really want to do something nerdy, you should actually look through that plan in detail. I mean, it is incredible. Like, it really is incredible. The amount of work that the city staff does is just, it's incredible. It's overwhelming. So.
I would actually further recommend, I took the time a year ago to meet with Doug Dowler and have coffee and talk through it and got some.
That's a whole new level in there, Asa.
Yeah, I got some pretty deep in the weeds discussions that were great and frankly helped me really understand our role in the process of, you know, frankly, spending money as a city. So.
Great counsel. I may have to follow in your footsteps there.
I don't know if Doug's listening still. I saw him earlier when he talked to us, but I actually do. I gotta praise him. I mean, super cool guy, very smart, very helpful for the discussion and really helped me understand, like I said, our role.
That's great. Well, it doesn't sound like there's any questions. I'll take a motion on somebody to adopt this thing.
Second.
Commissioner Powers, second.
Got it. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
All votes have been cast, and that resolution is adopted unanimously. Boy, we've done the hard work. Now it's easy. Now you just got to build a few billion dollars worth of stuff and we'll put a period on this thing.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. And I do want to send out a special thank you to Sarah and Jeff for helping me navigate the planning commission process. And so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Long meeting. We appreciate having you. That's the last item on the individual items to be heard. So we'll move on to additional items. One thing is the adoption of the 2021 Planning Commission meeting schedule. I don't have a copy of that in front of me, to be candid.
Click on your gov on the.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yep.
It's there.
We've talked about this in the past. I don't know if anybody has, you know, thoughts on it. I don't see what the need is to change it.
I'll echo my yearly comments that I would like us to continue meetings twice a month, even during periods of the summer break, just because, you know, I think it helps, you know, everybody can plan their own schedule. We're all adults. I'm sure we can figure out whether we've got quorum or not. And I just hate the meetings that we have where we've got so many items piled up that it's an issue. I mean, I know we're already dreading December. So that's my one comment.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I don't know that it would make much difference, Asa. And I think what's probably been the experience share of everybody, which is why those meetings aren't there, is that, you know, the six people who represent 90% of the applications are not there. You know, it's just, I think it's probably logistically, it's hard. And then you wind up with a meeting where you didn't, a lot of it got continued anyway, you know. And, you know, I will compliment our commission in that I have, I don't even remember the last time we had a meeting where we couldn't get to a quorum. And I know for a while, that was an issue, but we've been so great about it. But that's like the worst outcome, right? Is if you have a scheduled meeting, but you can't get to a quorum of the actual sitting planning commission members. I mean, that would be not a good look. So I don't know. Does anybody else have thoughts on it? I'm indifferent, so.
I kind of like the one-way month breaks, but that's just me.
I do think, Scott, you're right. I mean, just as a practical consideration, you know, there have been times during my tenure on the commission when we could not get a quorum, and that is a huge, huge disruption. Not only does it mean that you have a longer meeting the next time, it means that all of those people who are counting on those deadlines, and we frequently hear from developers that they are, for financial reasons, et cetera, counting on those deadlines, just have the rug pulled out from under them. I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, yeah, these long meetings are always difficult, but, you know, four times a year, we can live with it.
Okay. Anybody have strongly different feelings, or I think it sounds like we're headed toward an adoption here? Asa, I hear you 100%. I do not disagree with you. Like, there's a part of me that wants to plow through it. I just feel like I'm deferring to the collective wisdom of what's happened before, which is that people disappear and you can't find them.
I don't even, this isn't even a thing I feel strongly about. I just always, I like to talk about it a little bit, just make sure we're on the same page. You know, normally I also bring up, I still, you know, I'd love us to entertain this at some point, but I'd rather these meetings be at a time where people don't have to take off work to get to them. I know that that puts more burden on us as planning commissioners to work after hours, but I think it's the right thing to do. But I also know it's unlikely to happen. But just, you know, throwing it out there for the record again.
Gotcha. Well, at this point, let's take a motion on this. Do I have a motion to adopt the Planning Commission meeting schedule for 2021?
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Privet is taking the motion. I have a motion, a second to adopt the meeting schedule for the Planning Commission for 2021. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes are cast. Meeting schedule adopted unanimously. Next on the agenda is communication reports, Planning Commission committees. We don't have any, so I'll skip it. I know we want to have a conversation about the schools. I figured we'd do that in the Planning Commission member section. So Commissioner Claire, I'll start with you. Ward one, any comments?
No, no real comments, questions, and this may be coming up later, is if we return, if we plan to return to in-person next month, if that's the case, and training on new council chambers equipment.
Got it. So that's, I was going to talk about that in mind, but I'll jump in since you brought it up. We are scheduled to meet in person, December the 10th. I am, I want to make sure with everybody here, is there anybody at this point that either A, isn't going to be able to make the December 10th meeting for any reasons that are not COVID-related, first of all? So is everybody planning to be there? And then second, is there anyone who is not comfortable attending that meeting in person?
You know, I haven't entirely resolved it. First of all, I think we need to be a little bit careful, Chairman Cravens, about HIPAA issues here. But I have not entirely resolved the issue of how comfortable I am. I think it would be helpful to know exactly what precautions have been taken, and perhaps to visit the chambers and see if that would up my comfort level at all. So.
I don't know. I think, so I know there have been a lot of precautions taken. There are plexiglass dividers at each of the stations. The, there you go on your screen, Janice. Plexiglass dividers have been installed. The chambers will be limited to 33 members of the public, three members per pew, with overflow areas designated in the chambers. I don't know exactly, you know, or I'm sorry, within City Hall, I don't know exactly where those are.
Do we know how the public will be selected?
I'm assuming it's first come, first served. But here's what I would say, is staff, is there anyone with us that can give us a bit more enlightenment on some of the processes and procedures that'll be in place when in-person meetings resume?
Yes. Masks are required through City Hall and during the public meetings by the citizens and the staff. The police cadets will provide masks upon the entrance. Additional masks will be on the table outside the chamber. Entrance to City Hall is only from the south entrance. The police cadets will conduct temperature checks and provide wristbands. All the doors will be locked, but you can still exit out of them. Meeting attendees have to be required to sign a log for contact tracing purposes. They're going to have air purifying machines placed in the chamber. The plexiglass placed around the seating on the horseshoe. The members aren't required to wear the masks in the horseshoe, but once you leave that horseshoe and travel through City Hall, you have to have a mask. Every other pew is going to be taped off and only three individuals can sit on an open pew. Wipes and sanitizers will be provided on the horseshoe, the podium and the table outside the chamber. The chamber is cleaned and sanitized every day. So also, there's no more Zoom. So once you come in, you will sign in with your Prime Gov user ID and password. And we have touchscreen, and our staff will provide everyone your own little stylus pen just for that, since everyone will be touching the screens. And there's no keyboard. The counter space is kind of limited, so that's why, you know, working with your packet on digitally might be better. But we're going to have, we ask that you're going to come in at least 30 minutes early on that meeting so we can get everyone signed in and ready to go. And if you have any questions, concerns, suggestions, please let us know, and we will try to get those answered through our city clerk for all precautionary.
The chambers are cleaned once a day or after every meeting?
Every day.
Just once a day? Okay.
It says the chamber will be cleaned and sanitized every day.
Well, I have an agenda item that I can tell from the calls I'm getting that there will be several people from my ward who will want to speak. So will there be an option for them? If they can't get into the chamber, can they still speak remotely?
And we will not have Zoom, so now it's an in-person meeting only.
But there is overflow space if they can't fit into the chambers. And I understood that there would be closed circuit TV or whatever, wherever else they are, they'll be able to see what's going on in chambers. So when it's time for them to speak, they can come in and speak. Isn't that correct, Cindy?
That is correct. They're only allowing 33 people into the chamber, so we're going to come up with a way to monitor that.
So they could speak from an outside area? Is that what you're saying?
No, they can be seated outside the chamber in a different location, and then we can advise them when their item comes in, then they can go into the chamber. We just can't go over that 33.
So they could enter the chamber then and speak?
Yes.
Chairman, can I jump in a minute?
Yes.
I think if they did it like councils, when they were looking at the map for priorities, and this, of course, would weigh on you. The mayor said, if you're here for this item, please come into chambers. If you're not, please come out till we hear your item. And kind of had to keep the groups rotating as far as who was able to sit in chamber. So maybe it'd be like items one through 10 or something like that, or some kind of thing like that to rotate the people in and out.
I can certainly ask that if, after their item is heard, if they would exit the chamber. I can make that announcement the same way I've said Alt-Y 10,000 times. And I would also say too, I would encourage the commissioners, if you're getting calls, one of the things we should be doing anyway is advising people to suggest a speaker, an HOA president,
Of course.
a group, whatever. So that may even further limit the visitor headcount with eight people who want to tell us the same thing.
Of course, yes.
So I would definitely make more of a concerted effort to remind people, hey, look, the chamber capacity is going to be limited. You probably want to designate and send a speaker.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. That's great. Cindy, thank you for all those details. It's clear that you guys are taking a lot of steps. The city is taking a lot of steps to do everything it can. You know, my real question was just directed toward, you know, just sort of a personal objection to attending more than medical, Commissioner Powers, but it just, I wanted to make sure that if we knew we were going to have a quorum issue, we got to the bottom of that right now, so that we could begin to process and deal with it. It doesn't sound like we are. I would just say if there is anything, you know, feel free to contact staff and let them know if you're not going to be in attendance, because we do need to make sure we're going to have a quorum, that's for sure. So we don't want to bring people down there and then not have a quorum. So anyway, so thank you, Nate, for asking that question. Anything else from your ward or any comments from you?
No.
Okay, great. Commissioner Powers?
Well, the two things, I guess, that I had made little notes about today were having to do with the possibility of forming a planning commission committee to meet with and discuss with the school representatives about, you know, how our interaction with them will look moving forward. They all seemed very, very positive about the outreach. It's disheartening, but perhaps not surprising, that even though we've been sending them these notices, they have, you know, tossed them the trash can or done whatever, had no real idea what it was they were supposed to do, or even what they were allowed to do in response to them. So, you know, it might be helpful just to, especially right here at the beginning, to meet with them more and kind of iron out, you know, what it would look like and what we could accommodate, what staff would feel comfortable taking on in terms of working with them and so on. And then the other thing was the deal about the medical marijuana notice. That is a huge, huge deal.
Well, you know, Janice, I think you and I were in the hall chatting when one of the council persons came up to us and expressed concern that they wanted to know more about when medical marijuana was going to be an issue on our PUDs. I don't know if you recall that. So that didn't surprise me when that came up today. But I totally agree with you that it's, to me, it's inappropriate for that to be added in at that time when a PUD comes forward. I think that needs to be handled differently, and I think we need to have some further discussion about it.
I especially think, I especially find it problematic. I mean, I find it problematic at all, because I'm not sure it's consistent with at least the intent, if not the letter of the law, to have them singled out. But it's especially a problem if it's only being singled out on some and not others. You know, there are all kinds of abuse units that might permit either dispensaries or grow facilities or, you know, every industrial application we get. I just think we need to have a lot more discussion about this.
I do too, and I think it needs to look from the legal aspect. I mean, we don't.
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of us discussing it for no apparent purpose, I think everybody's in agreement with what you're saying. I think we should just, as planning commission, just send a letter of concern and say, city councilors, this concerns us. This is something you should look at. Susan Randall's on this call. I don't know if she's still listening or not, but I mean, she, you know, she needs to be relaying that message to city council, because I agree that it's not probably the right thing to it's not probably the right thing to do, and I think probably the city's going to wind up in trouble over that, um, at some point, you know? But it's not a problem we can solve, but we can certainly indicate to them that it's a problem they should solve, uh, and I think it's appropriate for us to do that.
I like that answer, personally.
Well, so then let me ask, do we need to, um, is it something we need to vote on, and therefore do we need to place an, uh, a resolution on the next agenda for us to vote on that, to send that concern to council? What's the procedural response?
Yeah, Susan, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll take your direction there, because I, I think we should do this on the school issue as well, once that committee has some suggestions about ways we can work with our, our neighboring school districts a little better, but would it be better for us to do a resolution, which I don't think that's probably, or would it be better for us just to send a, a letter?
Um, I think you could do either, but what I might suggest first is just to talk to, um, one of the council persons who that was an issue for, and see if, you know, what her response is to that.
So when you say her, are you directing us to Councilwoman Nikki Nice, or Councilwoman JoBeth Hammond, or?
I'm not specifically saying right now. I would just say, um, I will, let me talk to the council person that, that that was a issue for. I know it's not just one council person that it's an issue for. There are several, but like I say, I think that this may work itself out, um, you know, and, and not as quickly as we would like, but we are, like I say, um, drafting a new ordinance, zoning ordinance, which I don't think this would be an issue then, because we're going to have specific use units for the different type of marijuana uses. And so those use units would be on, um, you know, people would be able to know more about those use units.
Understood. I think, uh, Commissioner Powers' comment is right, and I think it's right to bring it up. Um, for, you know, just for your, your own thoughts, that that could potentially create some legal issues, but I'll let you guys solve those problems. I think it'd be great for us to have a mechanism where, you know, we can come in here and pontificate about stuff all day long and solve all the world's problems and yet get nowhere. Or we can create a, a, a tool where we have a voice that we can use to communicate with people who actually can accomplish that. And I think it would be wise for us to do that, because I think if we, if a school committee goes through, and we have a group of people who go and visit with the schools, and we come up with this, and we write a unanimously assigned letter by all the planning commission that says, this is something the city needs to take seriously and do. I think there's probably some power in that, um, and it's using our voices correctly, so. I mean, that, that's my suggestion.
I'd probably recommend doing a resolution. That's normally how I think, um, I mean, I think it'd be better to do that in a resolution to get your intent on, um, what your feelings are on a certain topic.
Okay, that's great. That's great feedback.
Maybe we can get a button on our new fancy screens, or we can, uh, send our councilman a little note.
There you go.
To his chair.
So then I guess my question is, should we, in fact, direct staff to prepare a resolution for our December meeting? Let Susan Randall go and discuss the matter with whoever she feels like she needs to discuss it with. And then, you know, if that resolves it, fine, and if not, we can take action on our resolution. I don't want six months to go by in the meantime, these notices going out like this. I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, my suggestion, based on the feedback we've just gotten from Susan, would be, um, I think our, I think, I think we've been, I think we've been heard. Um, if, if there's, uh, Susan, what I would ask you to do is if there's not a change in this, we, we probably do want to do a resolution, but let's, let's see what happens between now and December. Commissioner Powers, anything else?
No, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Coffee?
No, nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Privet?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to just talk about our little, uh, school representative thing today. I thought that was really cool. Being the father of three school-aged kids. Only one thought that I had is like, you know, if we somehow got the state representatives involved in, you know, discussions like that. Easier said than done, probably. I, I don't know how we could keep it from not being political, but I think it would be useful to hear from them, or them hear from us and the schools directly. But that's just my thoughts.
Glad to see you're at the Four Seasons, by the way. Commissioner Engel?
Um, I agree with Commissioner Privet with the state reps, and that'd be an easy thing to do. They're always looking for somebody to talk to and pontificate to, and I can lay a hand on everybody on the south side, most of the people on the north side, so if you want that to happen, I'd be more than happy to invite them into our conversation.
Okay. All right, anything else?
And I really do appreciate what we went through earlier today, the echoing what you said about the city plan, that is amazing how all that goes together, but the, the school conversation was pretty eye-opening as to how some of our schools are open, ready, and willing, and some of them are blowing up capacity and don't have room for others, and it's driven by development, no doubt, but it's interesting to see those dynamics play out in the different parts of the city.
Agreed. Uh, Commissioner Highsmith?
Uh, no, I got no comment.
Sweet. Commissioner Pennington?
Um, just want to, I've been saying it apparently all, all afternoon, but just want to agree with Commissioner Powers entirely. It is about, about us starting the school committee, and while I, I don't know that I have the time to actually be on it, I just think that it is a really good idea for us to take official action then. And I just want to say, for whoever it is, the commissioners who serve, who decide to serve on the committee, that we need objective criteria, not, and, and while I appreciate and empathize with the people who are um, having to deal with the overcrowding that's coming to their schools, I'm also like, this is the system, the way that, this is what it is. You've created a great school district, so now there's high demand. That, it, it just is what it is, and they just need to figure that out. Um, I guess stop being good, like, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, it's just, this is a natural, this is a normal, natural consequence of their success. And I love the idea of bringing in the state, because I do think it's a structural problem and a funding problem that we need to be dealing with, and I think it's, it goes far beyond the, the, this commission, but at least enhancing the communication with the school districts is a, is a good idea and a good first step, but. Um, and then on the, the marijuana drafting issue, I, I wonder if we couldn't also, Susan, um, and maybe you've already done it before for us, um, a, a, uh, a memo on our legal ability to discriminate against medical marijuana, um, zoning in any way. What are our limitations and our parameters? I don't know if I need to formally request that in a different way, but I still think that we need legal guidance to be very clear about what we can't.
Okay, we have researched that. I can get you something, um, next time. Some kind of a memo.
Susan, would you mind just circulating that to the entire commission, just so we can all review it and are up to speed on it?
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Pennington? No? All right. So what, what, um, what I would just say for, for my little piece is the school deal. You know, I, I'm always cognizant of us sort of staying in our lane. Um, but I'm also, um, thrilled when we can do something to affect some small, meaningful change. And my only pushback to the idea of bringing um, political members of our community into this discussion is all I want to do, all I want to do accomplish by trying to assemble that meeting and bring those district leaders to the forefront is to bring the finger pointing between the city and the districts to some meaningful end. And, and I think that we have some very simple tools that we can employ, both from the staff's side and from our side, that would enable a sense of communication between the planning for the city and the planning for these districts, which is where our interest with the districts lie. We cannot solve their funding problems. It's not what we're here to do. We can't make them read stuff. But what I would love to be able to say to the next district leader who comes on to complain about a development is to say, did you attend the Oklahoma City Planning Department's school update for 2020? And have you been, did you review those maps? And have you been, have you been returning, you know, your input on our applications? Because if the answer is no, I have exactly this much sympathy for you. We are a separate school division, or I'm sorry, a separate political subdivision from the schools. It is not our job to solve their problem. But when they come in and they complain about lack of communication, that is a problem we can solve, and that's the only problem that I think our sort of school planning commission committee should try and solve. Super limited in scope. We're here to help create tools for communication, so you can't say, we didn't know that was going on. We didn't know there were 600 homes. We didn't. And, you know, I do have sympathy and empathy both for those people who get the zoning notices, because I get calls all the time from people who are like, it's mainly honestly clients in your wards who get something and say, what is this? Do I need to come oppose this? I don't even know what this means. What the heck is R3? They don't know, you know? They don't know. So, uh, an effective communicate, notice is one thing, communication is another. And they deserve that from us. I think that's what we should try and give them, and that's the only thing I, I think we should try and give. We get out of that lane, we're going to get ourselves in trouble. So I would love to do the school committee. I, 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 I'm curious, I'm happy to serve on it. I'm curious if we have at least two other people who are willing to do it. I don't think this is a big deal, guys. I don't think you're making a huge commitment. I, I, I think we could assemble, you know, a, a, basically a short meeting with us that's open to maybe, you know, the district one more time. And, uh, you know, sit down and, and kind of go through a thought process of information. Let staff take that and vet what's capable and possible there. Because I also don't want to create a crazy burden on them. Um, and, and then we have something we could present in the form of a resolution to city council, and that we could also circulate to the districts, so at least there's some formal deliverable, to use the term from my world, a deliverable that we're taking to the district leaders and the city that says, hey, we saw this, this is our attempt to track some small effort to improve it, here you go. And, and we've done, we've done something there, you know? So, is there anybody else who's wanting to do it? Matt? That's a hand. You're in. I don't care what you, if you're going to say no or yes, you're in. Anybody else? Privet, you're in? Okay, so we got three. Mary Coffee, you want to be on that? Okay, so we've got four, so that's good. So that's not a quorum. We can do that. I'll get with staff on what we need to do to formally establish that committee, and, um, we'll get that going. Uh, and certainly, if anybody has input, feel free to send that just to me, and I assure you, I will get that circulated to our, within our discussions on, you know, making sure everybody has a voice to be heard there. And that's the only thing I have. I, I know this was a long day, and I appreciate everybody doing it. I'm super gracious and grateful to staff for all the work they did, because it was a lot of work on them. Um, I don't want to point anybody out, but I, just because I don't want to leave anybody out, but you guys, it was a long day, so thank you to everybody who, who put an effort here. Planning Department, Jeff Butler, anything from you?
Uh, just, uh, as far as the schools go, happy to help. Uh, I will, I will say that, uh, kind of what, uh, I believe it was, might have been you, uh, Scott, in, in the meeting today, uh, kind of described some information, maps and so forth that we could, that we could provide. We can certainly do that. It's not all that different than what we're already providing for the Mustang School District. Uh, they've contacted us fairly consistently for many years. Um, so it, it wouldn't be that difficult to kind of enhance and expand that to cover the whole city and to report it out by district, so that, that's certainly, certainly doable. So, uh, the other thing I was going to mention, we, we obviously made a lot of headway, uh, with three important, uh, study session topics today. So, uh, other things are, are, are coming up, including, uh, the bylaws. I know that you all have had that for a little bit, so we're just, uh, if you have any, um, opinions, direction as to, you know, when you would like to, um, talk about that some more, let me know. And then finally, um, I wanted to mention, uh, I sent, uh, back on the subject of the, of the kind of the, the in, in-person meetings, uh, I sent the guidelines in a Word doc on October 20th, so if you just plug in my name and your email, it should pop up, and you can kind of get a refresher, uh, if you want to see what those are, uh, that Cindy, uh, went over earlier. So, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I, I would say on the bylaws thing, let's get, let's get through, let's get through this, this beast in December and try to set something up. Maybe the second meeting in January, we could do a study session over the bylaws. That gets people through the holidays. Through this meeting we've got coming at us, and then, you know, that, that would seem to be a good amount of time, I think. Is that okay?
Yep, sounds great.
Okay. Development Services?
Nothing.
Excellent, Jared. Well done today. Uh, Municipal Counsel's Office?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Citizens to be heard. Anybody from the public have something to share that was not on the agenda today they think we need to know about? I do have two people, but I'm not getting any interest, so I'll skip over that. Uh, there's no other business that I'm aware of, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Be ready for December. It's going to be a long one.
See y'all later. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.